We got the last day, we got snow, so we were skiing, skiing in a snowstorm, and it was pressure.
Oh, really?
Yeah. The first day, they go, there's a forest snow.
Tripwire.
Yeah. And so, we skied Vale, you know, pretty.
It's been a while.
She was epic, actually.
Yeah.
We'll call the city council workshop for March eleventh, two thousand and twenty four to order. First agenda item is a budget portal tutorial.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Council. So this is the login page that you'll see. Our IT director is going to be setting you up with a login and link, which you'll get in your emails. I'm going to make the assumption that you see the same page that I see, since I don't have any special permissions on this. But what we'll be going to is where it says analytics and reporting, and it says budget. Just a reminder that this pulls in informations directly from Munis, which is our financial software. So you're seeing exactly what the departments entered as requests. And if you're trying to make it bigger like I just did, press control and scroll up. That will make it bigger, so you can see it. It's a little bit small when you first log in. All right, so in this section, you'll see the different areas where you can break down what you're trying to look at. One of the more important pieces is this department piece. You can either select all or just look at a particular department. If you're ever trying to clear something that you've selected, you can't see it until you hover over it, but there's a little eraser there, and that will clear whatever selection you just made. So if you selected the finest department, for example, and you want to clear that, you can do that here. I'm going to show you a specific department and their details, so you can see. All right, so we're gonna look at the city clerk as an example. What you can do with each of these lines is you can see the specific detail that they put in for that total amount. So, I guess we'll use this one here. So if you right-click on that line, these options will pop up. Drill through is the one that you're going to want to use. So drill through means that little detail box pops up, and if you click that, it will show you the breakdown of how they got to that total. You'll also notice that a little back arrow has appeared now, so I can go back to where we just were. So anytime you're trying to see, how did they get to that number, you can right-click on that, hover over drill through, and click on detail. And that will bring out any breakdowns that they've done. Not every single line has a breakdown. Some of them are, like this one, for example, is for hosting the code of ordinances. That's just a grand total. There is no breakdown for that one. So it does this for each of the departments that you're trying to look at. Notice I just clicked that little eraser to clear the selection, because I wanted to go look at a different department, so I can do that again. I wanna look in finance, and I would like to see a breakdown of dues and subscriptions in finance. So I'll right-click on that line, find drill through, and click on that detail. And again, you'll see how we got to those numbers. That's basically it. There isn't a lot of other options on here that would be helpful for you looking through. You can see things as a table. I haven't found that to be very helpful. It doesn't look as nice doing it this way. You can see the lines, you can see what the department is requesting for FY twenty five. You can see what the current year FY twenty four approved amount was, and you can see where they have spent so far. So current year actual is just how much has been spent as of this point of this year. Do you have any questions, or would you like to see me do something again, so you can?
How current is the current year actual? Is it like real time? Is it last month?
It's real time, so each night this refreshes. So it's as accurate as it was yesterday.
Any other questions on the portal?
And you said all of the information that we're seeing here is pulled directly from Munis, so it's not entered manually, it's pulled out of the system.
So the totals, the department names, things like that, that's all pulled automatically. The current year actual is pulled automatically. The only numbers that are entered manually are those department request numbers. Those ones were entered manually by the department directors.
Because those are requested numbers, right?
Yeah, I would just say also, if you're looking at the master summaries, the best thing to look at will be your books. So that will have the total department recommendations. It'll also have, then eventually you'll see, we'll change out these sheets as we move along, but you'll also get the manager's recommendation. You'll have that master sheet. You'll also have the for new councils coming in. If you looked at your previous budget, you'll see that there was a summary, executive summary. That really breaks out city, school, tax levy, has all that information on that sheet. You won't see that in a Munis report. That's something we have to plug in manually as we insert whatever, you know, the assessed value is, how that comes up with the mill rate. So all that information is entered into that sheet. You'll receive those as we move along.
There are a few other options on here if you want to dive deeper, or if you're trying to separate things and you want to look at just salaries, for example. You can click on those. It would bring up just the salary lines. If you're trying to look at another line, you can look at, it will let you break some of that down or group some of those together. There is another search option here. It's called object. So that object, for us in Munis, org is the department, and object is the account name line. So most departments have almost all of the same name lines for their accounts, a few outliers, but most of them are the same. So you could put in, if I wanted to see just, try to think of one that most people have, office supplies. If I wanted to see just office supplies or just training, I could find that object and put that number in here. So I could put in dues and subscriptions, and I can see here that dues and subscriptions is six three two thousand. And I can search for that, and it will group all of those together. So you can do some grouping in here if you so choose. That's just up to you on what you're trying to look at.
Any other questions from the council? Yep, Blunt.
Can we gum it up if we start moving stuff around and touching stuff?
No. So this is, what I'm in right now is under my login, and it doesn't affect or change anything. The only thing that we're changing is my view. So the only changes that are here is what you're viewing. It doesn't change anything in Munis. It doesn't change anything on the public portal for everyone else to see. It's just what you're viewing under your login.
In other words, if I did gum something up, you could figure out how to un-gum it?
Yes. When in doubt, click erase.
Just a quick question, sorry. On like CDBG, HUD, or ARPA, are those like separated off because of the different accounting, or?
So we don't have revenues in here at this time. I believe we will at some point, but right now, since we're just discussing what the departments are requesting, that's what's available. But there is CDBG, or they're not called that in here. They are business and community development. They are in here, so you'll see their department request, but those other revenues or outside funding is separate.
The other piece that you will not see in here is you will not see Norway Savings Bank Arena. You will not see Ingersoll. Those are built separately, as well as the special revenue accounts. And we'll go over this. You're seeing, you're gonna get a presentation on all those tonight. We'll talk about that. But you'll see how those are set up differently, because whether it's an enterprise account or it's a special revenue account, it does separate differently. And so you'll get those spreadsheets, and you'll have that information.
And we can push the revenues into this view that you have. What we weren't doing that at this time, because those totals wouldn't have matched your master totals, because each department request doesn't include revenue requests. Revenue requests in those master sheets are separated, so it wouldn't have matched those numbers. We would've had to explain each one of why those numbers didn't match up for you.
Anything else from the council on the portal? Great, thank you very much. First departmental presentation will be Public Services.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilors. I'm Dennis Stote, Executive Director of Public Services. Wanted to start out with some introductions of the team. To my immediate right.
Dan Goyette, I'm the Director of Engineering.
Scott Holland, Director of Public Works.
Derek Belanger, Director of Facilities and Energy.
Excellent. We'll start out with a brief org chart about our department, as you just met these three directors. We also have our Transportation Director, Jonathan Labonte. You actually heard from him through a separate presentation of the airport, under that budget presentation. So tonight, we're just gonna focus on these three directors, and Jenna Ray Brown is our Executive Assistant as well. We are a department that covers a great deal of responsibility, from the maintenance and capital planning of over six hundred streets in the city, five hundred and thirty seven lane miles, over sixty three miles of sidewalks, a number of parks and cemeteries. And I think, you know, just with our recent, you know, responsibilities with the school maintenance and taking on all those responsibilities, over forty municipal buildings and over one point five million square feet in responsibility and maintenance. So this is an impressive team. They take on a lot throughout the year, and they do a great job of managing this, all of that. One of, wanna talk a little bit of some budget drivers from our, from a public services position, and then they'll go into their individual departments as we go forward. One of the first that I certainly want to highlight is our, we have a new position for the EL Capital Improvement Manager. This position would be housed at the new Edward Little High School. As you know, this is a very large facility, a lot of investment here in the city, and we wanna make sure that we have a position there, really keeping eyes on that facility, managing that facility from a maintenance standpoint, as well as that capital improvement management for the school department, under our management contract that we have with them for the maintenance and capital improvement projects, as I said. So that's certainly one driver that we're, that you'll see in that budget as you go forward. Under our solid waste and recycling, we are seeing a significant increase in those areas, a little over two hundred thousand in total, between collection and disposal cost increase between those areas. So that's another driver that I just expect that you'll see in there, and we certainly can answer any questions as we go forward. But just quickly on the solid waste recycling, I know that, as you all know, we have the SNRB that has been tasked with coming forward with a new solid waste and recycling plan here, coming up here in the summer. That's resulted in us having to extend our current contract for a year, and that's what the contract pricing that you're seeing in here is that extension and a reflection of that. Bulky waste is another driver that you'll see through the, throughout the budget, and we do need to have, I think, a policy discussion at some point about how we want to manage bulky waste going forward. Little history, back last year, April of last year, we implemented a change, a pretty significant change to our bulky waste, and allowed the residents to be able to bring their bulky waste to Main Waste to Energy, free of charge, and really no limit on the amount. What we're seeing is a pretty significant increase from that in terms of the usage, which is great. That was what the program was designed to do, was to allow folks to go, but we're certainly seeing some budget impacts because of that. So I think that it would be important, our recommendation would certainly be to be looking at some type of parameters around that program, whether it be a restriction on the pounds that are allowed, or some type of tracking system that just keeps that budget more predictable. Because at this point, it's pretty impossible for us to predict how it's gonna go, because at this point, there is no limitation, and folks can just bring it there. So I think that we're seeing a pretty significant increase there, that we think that the best way to do would be to manage it a little differently, and to put some of those parameters. And as a whole, I think we discussed that initially with the previous council when we had gone through. Some of those ideas were, you know, you could put stickers, you know, or a card, a system that allows folks to show that, along with a proof of residency, and then that would allow Main Waste to Energy to better track who and how much they're actually bringing. Because I'm sure, as great as the program is, I think there are some overusers of the program, we'll say. And I think that that's gonna, it's something that we wanna be mindful of and manage going forward a little bit better. So that's certainly something we'd be open again for questions at any point, you know, through this, and have that discussion or at another time. But certainly recommend that we have that. Then I will turn this over to Scott, the Public Works Director. He's gonna talk to you about Public Works.
Okay, so we broke our org chart down into a couple pages, just so it could be easier to see. So it starts out with the director. The GIS services position falls in there, and then it goes down to the three operations managers that run the whole team. Fleet Operations Manager, we have the Senior Operations Manager for the highway, and we have Parks and Open Spaces Operations Manager. From there, it goes to the school department. As you know, with the school, we took over the custodial and the maintenance. We have nineteen people managing that, with a supervisor, an admin, twelve custodians, and five maintenance guys. The electrical position, the electrical maintenance position falls under us. Then it goes to fleet. We have eight people who manage our fleet. We maintain over a hundred pieces of rolling stock. These positions do fill in as plow operators as well. They all have an overtime shift. We are currently down to mechanic positions due to going out to other jobs that are paying a little bit more money. That's what we seem to have a hard time, and it is not easy to hire a mechanic. So we are advertising for those. And then we go to the rest of the team, which is forty one employees, and they manage highway operations, facility maintenance, and parks and open spaces. This is our team here. We just had all our IDs updated, so this is a very talented team that run, basically run the Auburn Public Works. Next slide is, we, in two thousand and seventeen, Auburn Public Works became the, probably became the first and remains the only nationally accredited public works organization in Maine. We were re-accredited in two thousand and twenty one, so every four years, we have to be re-accredited, and it'll be coming up again in September of two thousand and twenty five. With accreditation, it basically sets us up for agency-wide culture of continuous improvement. It helps with team building and staff development. It improves in communication, and it brings all of our policy and standing operated procedures up to date, and they are continually reviewed. Next is Public Works Highlights. Have several here I'd like to talk about. First being the Brightly Asset Management System. We currently switched back in January to a new work order system. So far to date, we've had three thousand six hundred and eighty one work orders for the highway building maintenance side. I can tell you that's probably gone up this week with all the damage from this last storm. And fleet, we currently have one thousand two hundred and ninety eight. Whether it's highway operations, fleet services, parks or field maintenance, or anything school-related, everything is captured. We are able to pull reports, and with all the recent storm damage, especially in the December storm where it met FEMA, reporting, it made it very easy to pull all those reports and gather all that, and I'll go over that in another slide. We hope to go live to the public with this new system, so they can make a request through the website. Currently, we have the reported feature, and that is gonna be replaced with this, which will automatically make a request. And then, once that request goes into the system, a work order will be generated from it. So there won't be, right now, it's a redundant system where we have to pull it off the website and actually enter it into a work order. This way, it's gonna let us, it'll automatically do it. Basically, we, winter highlights, I always like to highlight what's been so far for the winter. Obviously, it's very abnormal winter for us. Normally, at this time of year, we're closing in on twenty five to thirty events. I'd like to talk about the events. The events are when trucks roll out and have to put material on the road. So far this year, we've only had seventeen winter events, and that started in November. With total, we keep track of all the snow that falls, to the best of our ability of guessing at it, but thirty two inches of snow so far this winter, which we're normally up around seventy to ninety inches, and sometimes over a hundred, if it's a bad winter. Like to talk about parking bans. We've had five so far this year. There's a lot that goes into the parking bans, and we do not call for one unless there's at least three inches of snow. And used to be phone calls back and forth with the comm center to report vehicles. Be happy to say that with our OneDrive, we've done a shared spreadsheet, and it is shared before the storm, so comm center sees it, all our supervisors see it, don't have to call into Public Works through the radio. They can enter it right through their phone, comm center sees it, they ship it to PD, and then notes can be added to it, what actually happened. So we've done that with every parking ban, and it works very well. And then, basically, all these storms that we're having, obviously, it's caused damage. We've had four significant ones since June. June, you can remember, probably seeing it at Miller Alley, when that washed out, and we had several washouts throughout the city. July, we ended up losing a big section of Jordan School Road, and several other areas in the city where washouts and stuff had to be repaired. December was obviously the big one. That one was reported to FEMA. Total, with all the reporting, is very close to a hundred and sixty thousand is what we reported to FEMA. All of that is up to date. We're just waiting to hear back from them on fixing the damage. Most of that was on the Riverwalk, some on North River Road, and obviously, we had a lot of hours, man-hours, and truck, and vehicle time doing the tree damage, which was significant throughout the city. And then, of course, yesterday's storm, we had several areas that got damaged, and we're currently working on those to try to bring back to current status. And these, this past year, the three bigger rainstorms that have caused lots of damage, the amounts of rain that we've been getting in these storms, our systems cannot handle it. And again, some of these rainstorms that we're seeing are fifty or hundred-year storms that, you know, hopefully you see once in your lifetime, and we've seen a lot in this past year.
So that brings us to the Engineering Department. This big org chart you guys can look at. We're a department of three, and we manage about seven to twelve million dollars worth of capital improvement projects a year. We handle all the stormwater infrastructure within the city, as well as the MS four program, which is the municipal separated storm sewer system, and all the reporting that goes with that to the main DEP, as well as feds. We handle all the roadway infrastructure, all the city-owned retaining walls, all the city-owned bridges, and all of the sidewalks and multi-use paths within the city. I'll speak more about what we do as we get into our capital improvement program and that sort of thing. And I'll turn it over to Derek to talk about facilities.
All right, so our department, besides myself, also includes an operations manager, who was formerly under the Public Works umbrella, a purchasing analyst, formerly in the Planning and Permitting Department, and, as Dennis had mentioned, the new facilities manager position for the new high school. And some of what we do, we oversee preventative maintenance agreements, energy efficiency, construction projects, capital planning at city and school buildings, monitor and manage utility accounts, recommend supply contracts based on projected needs and market conditions. We manage all the requests for proposals, procurement strategies for all city departments. We also provide project oversight and coordination for capital projects, like the Powell Center Project, Public Safety Facility, and the new Engine Two Station Project.
Okay, so some of our budget drivers. Again, everybody is seeing the cost of everything going up, and there are some increased, slighter increases on some of our other line items, but see, this is some of the bigger ones. Our salaries increased due to the latest union contract, which is up fourteen percent. And part of that increase is requesting four new positions. What we are hoping to do is our line striping, all the crosswalks, arrows, stop bars, all of that stuff, bringing that back in-house. We currently signed a contract this year for a contractor to do it, but what we're hoping for, for late summer, is to hire those positions on the last three months of this upcoming budget, so hiring them in April, and having them in place, so we can start striping out of house and bringing back. By doing that, that is gonna help us hopefully get to some of these faded ones that fade out quicker. We can do it more than twice a year, which is normally what happens under the contractor. And we're at a mercy of a contractor. He doesn't have just Auburn. He goes other places as well. So with the large amount of striping that we have in the city, we're hoping to bring that back and be able to do it quicker and hopefully maintain it, so it doesn't fade. When we see a faded one, we can repaint it. And then our mechanic, I understand, we have two that we're trying to fill right now, but one of the things, Fight Department, we only do their support vehicles. We do not do the larger pieces of equipment. So service and maintenance, I know the Fight Department has to send that out. What we're hoping to do is hire another mechanic position and be able to bring those larger trucks in, just for the service and the maintenance. There are specialty items on those that still have to go elsewhere, and again, Bob will talk to that more when he does his presentation tonight. But that would be the four positions that we are requesting in this budget. Overtime, winter maintenance, there is a crease there because of the new union contract. Our road salt is a three percent increase, as you can see there, and on average, the last three winters, we use about five hundred more ton than we allot for, so that five hundred ton would bring us up to our normal last three winters. That would be the increases there. One of the other line items that isn't listed up there that I wanted to bring up is the repairs to building. I know Phil mentioned this in one of the council meetings. That is coming in under our umbrella, as we have. That is coming in under our umbrella, as we have facility maintenance guys that do this work, so all the other departments that had that under theirs is now coming to Public Works. And it's the same for the repairs vehicles. We've always worked on them, but the, the repair line item has always been in the other departments, and that has been brought to us, so that will show in, in the, in the budget. Think that's it on that? Oh, no, actually, I got one more thing. As you saw in our basic org chart, is the deputy director position was omitted, so that was a change. And then, all utilities, including gas and diesel, were shifted to facilities and energy. And that takes me right into CIP. Obviously, we have a lot of rolling pieces of equipment at Public Works. We do have a very good maintenance program that we're able to keep vehicles past some of, you know, the years where it should be traded in. Like a plow truck, for instance, should go ten, twelve years, we're keeping them fourteen, fifteen years. So it's really important that we try to stay on a schedule, so some of the equipment that we put in here is to keep those, that pieces of equipment up to date. Some of the, these are just some that I submitted. The number one priority is our catch basin truck. That truck is past its useful life, we are sending it out more often than not to have it worked on. That truck not only has the engine for the truck, but it has a pony motor on it to run the vacuum. Few years ago, we had the debris body replaced, which we did, we tried to replace it then, but now it's the truck, and we're having some big issues with that. This truck, obviously, Dan mentioned the stormwater compliance with DEP. We use this truck, we have to clean so many basins a year. We have, we do use it for hydro excavation, so this city has a lot of gas lines that we have to work around, and you can't use mechanical means to dig around them. So we use this truck to find it, and then we can dig around the line afterwards. It is used for jetting out pipes, be very costly to dig up a pipe that was plugged. We're able to send in a nozzle on the end of a hose and jet out this pipe. So it's got many uses, it's a very important piece of equipment for our operation. Obviously, plow truck, we try to keep up with those, we use those year-round for all kinds of type things, ditching, sweeping, plowing, and the biggest thing is snow removal. Again, we didn't have to do that much this year, but in past years, we have a lot of snow to move. The backhoe, as you see there, this is a nineteen ninety-eight, we're hoping to replace it with a mini excavator. We currently have two of these. These are not versatile pieces of equipment to get off in some of the areas where we go to dig, so a smaller excavator would be ideal, and we find it, that we've rented a lot more than not. So we're hoping to replace that with a mini excavator, just to increase what we do. And then, the trailer, obviously, that hauls our equipment. That is a twenty-three-year-old trailer, it's been worked on twice to take an inspection sticker, and it's getting to the point where it's not gonna do that, so that is just some of the items. Again, there were other items as well that you can see in the five years CIP.
We'll jump into the engineering budget drivers. The, the biggest one is, you'll see, it's not really the biggest one, but it looks that way, is the salary increase, and that's because we are accounting for two years of COLA increases, as well as a staff certification raise. Once they got certified, they had a bump in their pay. Training, it's a small increase, that's to include some CAD training for one of our newer employees. And small tools, that's to purchase a small pipe camera. Right now, we rely on the, Public Works has one, but I believe it's broken right now, and it's bigger than something that we wanna use. This would be a portable unit that the engineering staff could use on jobs. I'll jump right into CIP, where all the money's at. So we have reconstruction projects, those are our full reconstruction projects. They typically include our urban city center, those are the streets that we do full box cuts, new curbs, new sidewalks, typically new drainage when needed. Those are your second streets, or seventh streets, or all those types of streets. It's expensive. It used to be about three million dollars a mile, right now, it averages about five, five and a half million dollars a mile. So you don't get very far, very far with very little money. Reclamation projects are our more rural, rural streets. Those are the streets where we'll go in with a reclamer, reclaim the existing paved surface, add gravel where it need be, do a box cut where there's a clay pocket, add fabric where we need to replace culverts, and then pave over the top. Those typically do not include sidewalks or significant underground utilities, so not much in the way of underground storm drainage work, those are mostly your open-ditch roads and those sorts of things. Resurfacing projects are basically your paving projects. We typically like to look at roads that were done in the last ten to fifteen years, see what type of condition they're in, and if we can resurface them, it's a heck of a lot cheaper than having to go back five years from now and reclaim them and repave them and do all that other work. So a prime example of this I like to point at is Garfield Road, that was repaved either last year or the year before. And if you remember it beforehand, and you see the condition it's still in now, you can see how we've probably added ten to fifteen years of life to that road without spending a lot of money. Our MDOT match account, that money is used to match the Municipal Partnership Initiative, which is a fifty-fifty split with main DOT. They have a max one and a half million dollar project size, and we get, we contribute seven and, seven hundred and fifty thousand, they contribute seven hundred and fifty thousand. That is only eligible on state aid roads, so things like Court Street, Minehead Ave, Mount Auburn Ave, that, that program helped pay for Mount Auburn Ave. This year, you'll notice Hotel Road from Minehead Ave all the way to the town line under construction, most of that money came from this MPI MDOT match count. The MDOT match count also accounts for our ten to twenty percent match on federal money projects. There's a section of Hotel Road where we're paying from Lewiston Junction to East Hardscrabble, that's a ten percent match by the city, ninety percent federal and state money. So whenever we can get those, those good, good projects. The major drainage account, that pays for our MS4 program, our yearly reporting that's required, as well as any, we do a lot of CCTV, which is underground camera work to determine the condition of existing storm drain infrastructure. We pick areas of the city where we're gonna be doing construction work, we go in with the camera work ahead of time to determine if there are pipes and things that should be replaced before we go and repave a road, so we're not back in a year digging it up 'cause, you know, that's what apparently everyone thinks we do, we fix it, then we dig it up, and then we fix it again. So this is a, a good preventative program that we use through our, that was paid for out of the major drainage account. And then, this year, we're asking for a paving and retaining wall assessment. So it's been about ten years, we do a citywide pavement grading, it's a PCR, Pavement Condition Report, or Rating. Every street in the city is reviewed for cracking, displacement, the width is captured, the length is captured, any type of deformity, the type of cracking is all recorded, and streets are graded. With this program, we also are going to do the sidewalks this year as well, if this is funded, so that we know, I mean, everyone can drive down a road and say, that's not in good condition, but it's great to have a list where you can say, well, that's not in great condition, but this street over here is in even worse condition. It, it helps us determine which streets we're going to reconstruct and reclaim every year. It's one of the important pieces of information we need to determine, essentially, our, everyone wants to know, where is my street on the list? Well, this helps determine that list. As well as that, we're looking to do a retaining wall assessment. This hasn't been done in, ever. There are a lot of city retaining walls, city-owned retaining walls, and there are a lot of not city-owned retaining walls. This will be just on the city-owned retaining walls, determining condition, expected life expectancy, and essentially giving us a blueprint of where and when certain walls should be replaced. So that's basically it for engineering. I'll turn it over to facilities.
All right. So this department was created by a division of the Capital Investment and Purchasing Department. So the salary line shows a shift in three positions into this department, and then one new position. But the biggest changes you'll see in this budget are from the consolidation of utility and fuel accounts, which was done to reduce administrative burden and for tracking and managing expenses. The budget sheet that you have will show an overall increase of two hundred and fourteen percent. However, this only includes the items that were split from the Capital Investment and Purchasing Department. After including all the utility and fuel accounts from all the other departments, the overall increase is actually only one point five percent, so I just wanted to make, make note of that. I feel like it's also important to note that in two thousand twenty-three, the city received nearly three hundred thousand dollars in energy credits as a result of the agreement to purchase electricity from the Hackett Mills Hydro Facility. So that was a, that was a great offset for the city. And CIP, Dan?
So I think the theme here is aging infrastructure. Many of the city's central facilities are in that fifty-year range, or a little over fifty years. And some are in the process of being replaced, like the Public Safety Facility in Central and Engine Two. But we have, the city hall and the library are approximately twenty years old now at this point, so major building components and systems are all at the end of useful life and are now in need of replacement. So in this year's CIP, you'll see requests to address much-needed mechanical upgrades at these facilities, as well as to perform a study to address the billing, the building envelope issues and provide cost estimates for future capital planning at the library as well, to keep that building restored. And that is it.
I guess now we open it up for questions and comments.
Questions from the council? Council Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Getting back to your bulky waste, how much to, how much have you spent to date on it?
We've been averaging roughly seventy, seventeen thousand, or, yes, not seventy, seventeen thousand dollars a month in just the bulky waste since April of last year. So it's significantly up from where it was before. We never were at those kind of figures under the, other than when we did the curb side, obviously, there was a big, big number of costs with that, but.
So if you looked at the price of our spring cleanup, which I know is like a couple weeks of work, and what we've done for so many months with people bringing it, what's the cost savings, or has it by par gone over what you'd normally spend for spring cleanup?
Yeah, it, so, so roughly, we were, it was around eighty thousand dollars when we did disposal fees, when we did the curb side collection, and then the workers' comp costs, I don't have those directly in front of me, but I, I know they were significant, it was, it was over six figures. I believe it was, I hate to throw numbers out there, but I wanna say it was, it was, it was several hundred thousand dollars that we had gone into just for the history of, of workers' comp. In terms of operational or direct budget impact, the current program is higher, because, you know, again, it was eighty thousand is all we budgeted for disposal costs when we would do the curb side, and that, we probably hit that in, in less than five months, roughly five months with this, with this current program.
That's not a direct apples-to-apples comparison, all right?
It is not a direct apples.
Because what you have now is offsetting costs that residents were paying, that took stuff and dropped it off themselves during the two-year period waiting for the next curb side recycle.
Thank you, Mayor, that, that's absolutely correct. The opportunity costs, that, that taking the entire Public Works Department for really close to a month, I mean, when you really, when you calculated all that time, completely dedicated to nothing but curb side, bulky waste and brush collection and, and all those programs. We now have a, a brush site that is twenty-four-seven, folks can bring any of that anytime they want, anytime, bring it there at, at their convenience, and then, like you said, having, having our residents being able to coordinate their own bulky waste delivery certainly allows our Public Works Department to do everything else that needs to be done. And, and really, the timing, you know, of that, when we typically do it in May, could, is one of the most challenging times for the Public Works in terms of everything is growing, everything is, grass is growing, everything is coming out, we really wanna have everything looking good as we come into the summer, and we're basically, with that previous program, would have to lose all of that productivity just to dedicate it to the bulky waste curb side.
Just to follow up on your prior con, comments about the bulky waste, I happen to be down there today, this morning. What confidence do you have in this material all coming from Auburn and all coming from residential? 'Cause I pulled up, they have no idea who I am, they asked me my name, they asked me my address, and they said, did that all come from your house? And I said, yes, and I could have been from any place and given them any name, and... So, so we're getting a lot of materials, but do we have any idea how much of that is real residential?
So we, we have a strong relationship with main waste to energy, so level of confidence that they're checking, and I hear that every time, that they are certainly verifying with folks every time, that, not a person I've talked to says, yeah, no, I get asked every time I'm in there. So they are doing their due diligence, I, I think, to make sure that, you know, to do what they can to check, but that doesn't give me an incredibly high confidence, to be very, you know, frank, it's, we don't know, we're taking people's word for it. And, you know, as much as I think that majority, there's no question, I think people are using it appropriately, and I think that the vast majority are. And I think that I've heard great stories of residents in the community utilizing their neighbors, working together to try to help if they don't, you know, we talked a lot about hardships, and, and really how to deal with that, folks that just don't have the ability to get their, their materials there. What I've heard is very positive feedback from that standpoint, but to, to really answer your question in terms of confidence in where this is coming from, and that we know with, with absolute certainty that it, it's, it's coming from the right places and no one's abusing it, I couldn't give you that. I think that there are folks that probably do abuse it and give the right answers, and I think that that's an expression, a concern that has come from main waste to energy, even saying that, you know, we can only do so much in, in verifying addresses and, and that, but that's why I think additional parameters are looking at that would, would benefit us in being able to control that and, and ensure we're getting it from the right place.
So when they ask you, they're just noting this, right? They're not checking the name and address against a database, see if it's even real.
Correct.
So that goes back to your earlier point about some, for lack of a better term, pre-registration system like the card or the DCALE, so someone's actually verifying that, and then you just pull up.
Correct.
You still take their word for where it came from.
Correct.
Did you want to add something, Council Walker?
Well, I think, I think the card is needed, but I also think the sticker is needed as well on the windshield. At, at least if the sticker is on it, it probably comes from Auburn, and the card, you would probably be the only holder of it, but if they really wanted to, they could check your license against the card. I know when I've gone, even though they know me, they ask, where do I live? And if, they had a new fellow there not too long ago, and he asked to see my license. So, and my license doesn't say where I live, but it's still in Auburn.
Other questions from the council?
You mentioned, for those that have a hardship to get their waste there, it's great to hear that, you know, neighbors are, are working on that. Do you have options through Public Works that could assist them or to guide them in how to do that?
Yes. So what we, what we agreed to when we implemented this program is that any hardships would be directed to our department. Director Holland and I both fielded those, kind of worked with residents. Sometimes, you know, honestly, their hardship was, I just don't have a pickup truck. And a lot of times, we were able to have that conversation with them and say, well, you know, if you have a resident or a friend or a family member, all you have to do is ride along with them, and, and you can show your license, and that's perfectly legitimate. Nine times out of ten, that was, great, I can do that, I'm good. And then, we did have, I'd say about a handful, three, okay? I was, I thought it was a little bit more. We had three legitimate hardships that we were able to work it out with a contractor to pick that, those items up, schedule it with them, and make it happen. So we did have three legitimate hardships that we were able to work out. Everybody else, I would say, ended with a, an answer and was able to find another solution. And once they knew that they could just ride along with someone and, and just show their ID, they were fine, so.
Thanks.
Other questions from the council? Council Walker?
Yeah, the, one of the problems I see in this city is when stuff sits on the sidewalk that comes from somebody's house. It might- It might sit there three weeks. I feel that that's way longer than it should happen. So we need to work together to find a better way of being notified, or one, or all your drivers are told, "We want to be notified the minute you see that out there." Because I, I know, I think it's Gama Javino, there's been a couch out there for I don't know how long, if that's the right road. I know I've gone by it half a dozen times, but it, it takes us way too long to either force them to remove it or us to remove it. So I wish we could come up with a better plan that can attack the junk that's all over the city of Auburn.
So I agree with you, Councilor. I think that there is times that it lags a little long because of the process. When we, when we identify that, we, we take the action step of tagging it, as we call it, and notifying code enforcement and, and looking for their assistant to get that first removed, you know, that way. And then typically, if it's not, then, then we go through that process, and then we end up removing it or getting it removed somehow and making that happen. So I, I agree that there is some of that. Some of that is identifying it a little better, a little sooner, as opposed to sometimes that lag time is, is we didn't catch it right away, or it wasn't reported back by one of the crews. One of the things that we are, as Scott mentioned, under that asset management program with the work orders, I'm not saying this is the end-all answer by any means, but it is going to be another tool that as we continue to expand on that program, one of the goals is for our staff to be able to have devices where they can report and create a work order or flag an issue right there themselves. We're not quite there technology-wise, but we are getting there, and I think that this system is absolutely designed to do that. So that's just another tool that I absolutely agree that will help, because now when, when members out there may be patching a pothole and they're doing another task, they see that, it's a matter of a few clicks, and they can report that issue. And now a supervisor is aware of it, you know, live, and it's happening. So, so that, those action steps, they may not tag it, as I said, but they're the ones that can at least report it and then trigger that to happen. So that's one tool, but I will certainly, we'll talk about that as a team and look for, I guess, different ways that we can expedite that process and getting those reports, because I agree, sometimes they take too long. And if you leave it out there, it's not good sight for the city, as well as others tend to jump on board with that and doing the same, so.
Yeah, Dennis, not just, not just Public Works, but other departments as well. We have, we have other teams that are out there, whether it's patrol, fire, wherever. If they see something, they'll be able to go onto that same system and enter that work order, because often you have patrol officers that, they're going to see those things, they're driving and patrolling their neighborhoods. We'll work on getting them to make sure they know how to access it, put that work order in, and that helps to expedite that, because there's, there's no doubt that if it's not, you know, they're, they're just anticipating that whoever's responsible for it is going to see it and take care of it, right? And so this expands on that, so we have multiple eyes, not just internally with staff, but also the public can create that, that work order as well, once we create that portal. And so that will certainly help with us getting it on the schedule, getting the work done, and making sure that it's assigned.
Council Mel?
One thing I, looking at this, is if this is correct, you said $17,000 a month in bulky waste, which is about $204,000 a year. And if we used one month of all hands on deck, and I counted about 80% of your cost, that's like $206,000. So it's, it's a, it's, it's a good, it's, it's a fair comparison, I think.
Couple follow-up items on Public Works, the new positions. Do you have any further information about the cost offset for the striping and mechanic? I, I noticed in the striping, the Center Line Road striping, there was only one bidder, so there's zero competition there. And is there a comparison, what we'll save through doing this in-house?
Yeah, you mean the long line striping?
Yeah, but this, this striping's going to do just?
Just the hand.
Just the hand striping? So, so what's the comparison by hiring in-house to do that as compared to external vendors?
So right now, we pay out, yeah, close to $130,000. But again, with a contractor, we're relying on him. You know, if it rains a night and he had us scheduled, he may go to another town, and then it puts us off. So it's the timing of getting it done quicker and everything else. So it's 125,000 is what it costs us to do that. We were going to use that money towards these positions. These positions also would help us in our plowing operations in the winter. We are short there as well, so obviously, they would stripe in the spring, summer, fall, and then they would be plow operators. This past winter, we were lacking on sidewalk tractors, so we had to finish plowing the roads before we could go to sidewalks. So that would also increase our efficiency there in plowing sidewalks and stuff like that.
Mayor, if you, if this makes it through the manager's recommendation, then you'll have a further detail on that as well, because what we'll do is we'll break out the actual cost of their time spent doing the handwork, but then also the time that we will put back into equipment operator for plowing, which are positions that were eliminated in previous budgets and looking at bringing that back. But we'll break those costs out for you.
And I'll, and I'll just add, you asked about the mechanic. I, I believe that offset will be coming from Chief Chase in the Fire Department. They'll probably cover some of that in that situation. Great. Any other questions from the council? Council Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could we get a copy of your presentation?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so I don't know if you were sitting here when I handed out the books. So the books that you have right now include just the master list or summary sheets of each department's budget, but you'll also have printouts of every department's PowerPoint. So the ones that you saw last week, the ones you're seeing this week, and moving forward as well. Oh, right, yes, they'll also be available on the FY25 budget page, so, but you'll have printouts for your books.
Anything else, Council Wyser?
Yeah, you spoke about the, when it comes to what roads are going to be determined the priority. So is that something you're doing conjunction, conjunction with the main DOT, such as like the A-RAN? Is that what's going to happen?
Yes, that's where, we're hoping we can hire an A-RAN truck. So it's basically a radar that drives down the road, and it's not done manually, it's done by computer, so you get a true, it's not, I was in a bad mood this day, so I decided to create everything bad, and Tim did it yesterday, and I'm doing it today. This will give us a true representation. If you see it, the DOT has one, it's a van, but there are private contractors that have them that do, drive around to different municipalities and do that, so.
Awesome, thank you.
Anything further? Council Walker?
And other questions that we may have, we'll still be able to submit to you?
Yeah, absolutely. And then you'll, we'll be going over these budgets again when we do the manager's recommendation.
Great, thank you very much. We'll move on to the Fire Department.
Should we wait? Okay. Mayor, Council, thanks for having us. You know, our intent is to review Fire Department operations, do a little bit of history on what we've done, and then also speak, obviously, to the budget recommendations as well as capital, so. Just our mission statement here, and you'll have it in your packet. Let this, I click a lot, because I thought the, oh, thanks. That's going to be a problem, Kelsey. So we are an all-hazard's department, and basically what that means is the Fire Service has morphed into a all-problem solver type of department. Basically, people call 911 for a large assortment of issues and problems. And ultimately, if it doesn't fit into the, the police bucket, the Fire Department responds. And so we, we have a lot of those responses. And in general, you know, the, the expectation of the community and of our department is certainly that we respond to fires, which make up structure fires. We do a lot, we're a rural city, and we have a lot of wildland and grass fires. We do a lot of vehicle and transportation-related accidents. We're a service center, population and business activities certainly increases the transportation accidents that we have. And we have a lot of hazardous materials in the city, both from manufacturing and also transiting through the city. We have to be prepared to respond to any emergency that comes from that spills or whatnot. We also do a lot of EMS and rescue. As you are aware, we do EMS transport at the paramedic level. We are the EMS transport agency for the city of Auburn. But we also do a fair amount of water rescue, and we have to be responsible for rope rescue and confined space rescues as well. So all, all of these activities are high-risk, high-value to the community, but also high-risk to our staff, and requires a high level of training of our staff to maintain those skills and be prepared for the emergencies when they do happen. Our staffing structure is that we have a four-platoon system. They work one day on, three day off on a typical firefighter 24-hour schedule. A platoon is comprised of two fire engines, one at Central Station, staffed with three personnel, and one at New Auburn Station, staffed with three personnel. We have a quint. A quint is an apparatus that serves both as an aerial device, a ladder truck, as well as a pumper. That is at Center Street, and that is staffed with three to four personnel. We have a command unit, 315. That is our commander of the day, the person responsible for all of those emergency responses. And then we also staff two ALS ambulances. What that does is it brings our minimum complement, we, we, to staff all of those apparatus, our minimum complement is 14 staff on duty at a time. With each platoon, we, our, our approved hiring is to 16 people. And that's important because with vacations, sick time, trainings, and those types of things, that allows us to maintain that minimum staffing. It offsets a lot of overtime by having enough staffing to keep those filled, without every absence having to be filled with overtime. As you can see, we're broken to three districts. Unfortunately, you can see that the two bottom colors run together, but we have Engine Five District, which is out of the Center Street Station, that's our quint and one rescue. Central Fire has Engine Three and one rescue, and our command unit, 315. And then in New Auburn, we have an engine staffed at South Main Street. So why are we staffed the way we are? I know you can't read all of this text, but I tried to blow up the important pieces. That staffing model really comes from NFPA 1710, which is National Fire Protection Association standard for the deployment of fire resources in career fire departments. And when we look at that, their recommendations, for example, for a single-family dwelling right at the bottom, a total effective firefighting force, this is for a fire just in a single-family home, 2,000 square feet or less, one-story building, is 16 or 17 firefighters. 16 without an aerial device, and if you have an aerial device, 17 firefighters. So we only have 14 on duty at a time. We have what they call automatic mutual aid from Lewiston. When we have a confirmed structure fire, Lewiston sends another engine with three people. That gets us to our complement of 17 folks to fight that fire. That's the minimal recommendation from National Fire Protection Association for a fire just in a single-family home. Over here on the right, you see, if we're talking about three-story apartment buildings, we have a few of those in Auburn, too, right? Those are really our bread and butter fires. We have a lot of three-story apartment buildings. Total effective response force for a fire in those buildings is 27 to 28 people. So the, our staffing model is built around those recommendations and the norms of the industry to provide an effective firefighting force. What that means is you heard me express that four of those folks are on ambulances for us. It's integral that those folks are also firefighters for us to reach that complement. So they play dual role. They have their firefighting gear, they have a complement, they have their air packs, they have a complement of tools on those rescues. When we have a fire, those folks are responding to help us meet those minimum standards and fight fire as well. There are also some EMS, some responses for EMS response standards. Across the top here, these red bubbles, you see what is called the American Heart Association Chain of Life, and it's the critical key components to effective treatment of heart attack and cardiac arrest. You know, recognition and early notification of the 911 system, immediate high-quality CPR, rapid defibrillation, which is electrically shocking the, the heart to restore a rhythm, basic and advanced emergency medical services, and advanced life support at the hospital. And then over here, what you see is what they call, we call it pit crew CPR. You know, and a lot of imagery people have is CPR of two people, one person doing chest compressions and the other one doing breaths. Science has shown that there's so much more to that. There's timing and effectively giving the right medications at the right intervals. There's coordination, command and control. There's maintaining quality CPR through not having somebody get fatigued and have reduced compressions. So the effective model is to have six people on a cardiac arrest. And so sometimes you'll see a fire engine with our rescues. That's us getting, and oftentimes, our command unit, 315 as well. That probably was quoted as a more severe call, and they're getting those resources because that's the most effective model for results. You can see, with regard to EMS, our average arrival on scene is four minutes and 54 seconds. That's to one of these chains of, of survival, getting there early and being able to start CPR. Once we're on scene, we're at the patient and starting those treatments within another 90 seconds. We have, on 100% of our cardiac arrest case in the city, there's an ALS provider. That means a higher-trained paramedic, rather than just an EMT, on 100% of our cardiac calls. Our rate, which is of ROSC, which is return of spontaneous circulation, that's having a pulse following a cardiac arrest, restoring a pulse to a patient following their cardiac arrest is 40%. The national average is about 26.7%. So we, our, our, our deployment model is effective in this regard. We gets, we can get resources to the scene very rapidly. We bring the amount of resources it takes to be effective at the job, and we should see good results from it as a result of our EMS delivery model. We also have a fire prevention officer who administers our fire prevention division, if you will, a division of one, but he also utilizes our engine crew staffs to do inspections as well. Fire Prevention did over 20 plans review, reviews for new constructions. That is a detailed analysis by somebody who's trained in, in fire system, fire prevention systems. So that's sprinkler systems, alarm systems, but it's also systems within the building, like how the walls are constructed to prevent the flow of fire, to prevent the flow of air, smoke evacuation systems, those types of systems. And with any new construction, the Fire Prevention Officer reviews those plans and often has to give feedback back to them to meet minimum standards for the fire protection within a building. We've conducted 225 life, life safety inspections in 2023. Those are both our Fire Prevention Officer and also our engine crews going into existing buildings and businesses to review safety to minimum standards. These are some pictures that were actually, have been taken, garbage cans in front of pull stations and fire extinguishers, wiring that certainly would be a possibility of electrical hazards. We can see an emergency exit door here clasped and padlocked, other doors obstructed, fire alarm systems. We find these things on a regular basis, and part of our goal is to maintain a high level of safety in the city. So doing regular building compliance inspections is how we do that, through prevention and awareness. In almost all of these cases, it, it is just a matter of us making people aware that they're in violation. We give them time to remedy the situation, and most people, a lot of housekeeping, it's just, they don't think about fire safety. So the garbage can, over time, has gotten moved there. When you ask them to move it for fire safety, it's done very quickly. So that's how we're using fire prevention to increase safety within the city. We also provided 25 fire safety presentations, most of which were during fire prevention month, to over 1,000 students. And the Fire Prevention Division is responsible for our cause and origin investigation. The Fire Chief, by law, is required to determine the cause and origin of all fires in the community. That's delegated to somebody who has a high level of training, higher level than I do in our Fire Prevention Officer. We had 18 investigations in 2023. Our current organizational structure, you can see myself, we have the Fire Prevention Officer, that is a union position, but he reports directly to me. We have an executive assistant and an EMS coordinator. We have the deputy chief, I'm sorry, I probably should have started with an introduction, but Deputy Chief Matt Feifield is the deputy chief. And then he oversees the four platoons, if you will. All of these folks in this bottom two tiers, those are direct response folks. They are our responders in the field. So you'll see one battalion chief, one captain, full lieutenants, and 10 firefighters. One of the things you'll see in the budget, and one of the budget... One of the things you'll see in the budget and one of the budget drivers is the need for a deputy chief of EMS operations. EMS is eighty percent of what we do, you'll see that in another slide. It's also especially post COVID, it's, has heavy regulatory requirements of us, it has heavy training requirements. And we are, in comparison of, you know, a department of sixty nine folks, we're really administratively light and our ability to advance some of the things that we've wanted to in our organization has been hindered by a lack of administrative help. So that, this shows an addition of an EMS deputy chief to our operation. These are our calls for service in twenty twenty three. As you can see, the lion's share of this, about eighty percent are our EMS and rescue calls. We did over five thousand, we did five thousand fifty eight EMS calls last year. We'll talk a little bit about those trends. Ninety one fires. I think the other big bar I would point out is this, these hazardous conditions calls. Hazardous conditions might be things like downed wires, downed power lines, but also we do a lot of calls for the smell of gas in a home. Those are dangerous conditions, carbon monoxide in a home, dangerous condition calls. This is our trend, call volume trend since two thousand seventeen. We really are just getting busier and busier and busier and are struggling in some respects to keep up. We've seen a thirty four percent increase in calls since two thousand seventeen. Forty four percent increase in EMS calls. Our EMS calls in that timeframe have gone from a little over thirty five hundred to over five thousand EMS calls in that period of time. And historically, and the trend remains, about eighty percent of what we do are EMS EMS is interesting in that it's a revenue generating source for the department. One of the things that I think is important as we look at the fire department budget requests is we also look at the revenue that's generated from EMS. This slide is intended to try to show you that. The top line there in red are total fire department expenses, right? Everything that we spent to do fire and EMS services for the city of Auburn. The green are our revenues, our revenues have increased. And this chart shows from two thousand fifteen, excuse me, FY fifteen. In FY fifteen, we did not do EMS transport. So that was our baseline, no EMS transport. At that time, the fire department was staffed with fifteen people per platoon. We currently have sixteen approved, right? So the service delivery model was the same because we need those fifteen folks for firefighting, right? So we had the same amount of staff and in twenty fifteen, you can see where our budget were. Our expenses have increased across to twenty twenty five, but our revenues have also increased substantially, right? We had a hundred thousand dollars in revenue in FY twenty five, excuse me, in FY fifteen. That was a hundred thousand dollars that United paid us to be able to come to Auburn and do EMS service. That's included in here. Now we generate this past year over one point seven million dollars in EMS revenue, right? So I asked that you look at the budget with regard to our total expenses and the net of our revenue. When you do that, you take our expenses minus our revenue, this yellow line is the effective cost of fire and EMS services on the city of Auburn, almost flatlined in ten budget years from FY fifteen to FY twenty five. Just as a point of comparison, the black line that you see there is the trend line, that's a one point five percent annual year over year increase. So currently with the projected, proposed, my proposed budget request for FY twenty five, we're still at or below the one point five percent annual year over year increase because we have this revenue that continues to increase to help offset our operational expenses. And the top chart really depicts it for you. I don't have the twenty five request in there, but you know, you can see basically in the ten fiscal years from FY fifteen to FY twenty four, the total net expense increase for the fire department has been about a hundred and forty four thousand, excuse me, two hundred and forty four thousand dollars. And in that time, we've seen an increase in call volume of thirty seven percent, right? So that revenue really is important for us to look at as part of the net budget. So budget drivers, revenues. This year's budget projection is budgeting EMS revenues of an increase of two hundred and thirty five thousand over the current fiscal year. And then in this budget, I was asked to include some expenses for a grant that we'll be getting from Maine EMS. And so the expenses show in the expense lines, but also the revenue will show in a revenue line. And that's, that grant will be able to be used, fifty thousand dollars for capital and a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for operational stabilization programs. What that grant program was, was I've served on numerous committees at the state. I recently served on a, I was a legislative appointee for the Blue Ribbon Commission on EMS for the state of Maine. And this is the second Blue Ribbon Commission and they did an assessment of the state of EMS in Maine and found that most EMS agencies are struggling to stay alive. And there, every EMS agency of the state is subsidized in some way. In Auburn, the way that we subsidize EMS, obviously through taxation, but it's the fact that I don't have to pay for two, an EMS station and a fire station, right? It's the same station being used for dual purposes. My staff is being used for dual purposes. The heat in the building is being used for dual purposes. All of those things are used to subsidize EMS. Many agencies don't have that economy of scale, if you will, to help them be more cost neutral. And the reimbursement rate for EMS, we get reimbursed about sixty percent of what we bill for EMS services. And that results in our one point seven million dollars in revenue. Many EMS services struggle with not having that ability to share those expenses like we do because we're a fire based EMS agency. Fire based EMS, of the top ten communities, ten largest communities in Maine, nine out of ten of them are doing fire based EMS, just simply because that economy of being able to share those expenses is what makes EMS viable for their community. So to that end, the state issued a few fiscal year, last fiscal year, about a thirty two million dollar program to try to prop up EMS. The first tranche of that, about forty percent of that was made available in this grant program that we applied for and we got a hundred and eighty thousand dollars from that. So we're using that to stabilize our EMS system, if you will, and I'll explain to you how that gets used. Budget drivers, regular salaries, the negotiated increases here. This current upcoming fiscal year was a five and a half percent wage increase and then we just did a wage reopener for an additional two and a half. So that's reflective of both the five and a half and the two and a half percent wage increase in this budget year. This next one, overtime regular EMS. You'll probably remember for those of you that have been counselors for a while, I've really been pushing for at least two budget years now that our EMS call volume justifies us adding a third rescue for at least some period of time. And we've talked about me phasing that in, not immediately, starting with a third ambulance responding twenty four seven, but a third ambulance responding during peak hours, weekdays, forty to forty two hours a week. In fact, two budget years ago, the council approved us to add four positions to try to offset overtime and to use that to try to do some weekday EMS. Plain and simple, we just weren't able to hire the positions because I couldn't hire. I couldn't fill the available staff that I had. We just had a number of vacancies and we couldn't hire enough people. So by the time this current FY twenty four came around, that, those positions were no longer funded. We've been trying for several years to add some EMS capacity. It would help, great deal with us with regard to recruitment and retention. Our EMS crews really get beat up. They are very, very busy. Their utilization rate is high, the documentation that's required of them are high. And to be honest with you, the stress of the types of calls we're running is also high on them. So we're looking to offset that a little bit, meet the current demand on our EMS crews by adding a third ambulance. So that, that overtime line there, that is part of what is currently being funded in that grant. That's one of the operational pieces that we thought to stabilize our EMS organization, reduce turnover, adding that third ambulance was important and part of that hundred and thirty thousand dollars in operational is in this EMS overtime line. What that is, is one of the positions, forty two hours a week for the extent of the fiscal year on overtime. The other position is funded through what is currently our EMS coordinator position, actually becoming a response, field response person out of this grant. So that would allow us to also fund the grant of a, with the grant, a non overtime position to run those forty to forty two hours a week on a, on a truck. Other budget drivers, we've got some, our increases to the overtime in large part driven by the negotiated wage increases and also to bring some of those in line with, with reality, what historically we've used for some of those. Personal protective equipment is just the cost of inflation. We've seen the cost of a set of firefighter turnout gear go up by twenty percent in the last couple of years. It's just, everything post COVID has gotten extremely expensive. Capital reserve, I'm sorry, training and tuition. The contract currently requires us to train every new hire to the paramedic level within four years. That drives a lot of people into paramedic school and putting somebody through paramedic trainings, about thirty thousand dollars each. So we've had some turnover, we have a lot of new hires, we have a young crew and there'll be a lot of people in paramedic school coming up in the next fiscal year. Capital reserve for EMS, I've increased that. Again, because we have EMS revenue, when this was originally set up, they wanted to be sure that the revenue funded all of the costs of EMS. So EMS is one of the few buckets where we have EMS capital reserve and that gets funded annually to build up money so that we can then draw it down when, excuse me, when we have capital purchases. I just think our annual contribution needs to increase because the cost of an ambulance went, has gone from two hundred and sixty three thousand to about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars since two thousand and eighteen. So this would allow us to keep that fund solvent and have money in there when we need to make capital purchases. Vehicle repairs, Public Works spoke to it. Our historical spending on, on vehicle repairs has been about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. That's very much driven by our large apparatus and, Matt, our average hourly rate was a hundred and sixty dollars an hour?
They range from a hundred and eighteen to a hundred and sixty five dollars an hour.
So our vendors that we're bringing this stuff out to range from a hundred and sixteen to a hundred and sixty five dollars an hour. We have really struggled this past year. We had a vendor, Morrison and Sylvester, that was great for us. They were bought out. The company that bought out Morrison and Sylvester has really not been able to meet our needs. They can't get us in. We haven't, we've sometimes had trucks out of service for months because we can't get them serviced down there. So that's really limited our, the number of vendors we have. We have a, the deputy's done a great job seeking out a mobile vendor that can come to our stations to do some work. And we also have a local vendor that does fire truck service. But again, because that, everyone in the region lost, Morrison and Sylvester is a great vendor, he's very overwhelmed too. So we've had discussions for over a year now with Public Works and trying to figure out what they can and can't do for us. So with this budget, I reduced our vehicle expenses from a hundred and twenty down to ninety thousand dollars, thirty thousand dollars in offset for this Public Works position. I actually think that after a fiscal year, when they've got somebody on the ground, I think that offset's going to be more like sixty to eighty thousand dollars. The reason I haven't accounted for sixty, eighty thousand dollars this year is Scott already has two vacant positions. We don't know when it's going to be hired. If it's not hired immediately, I'm going to be paying a hundred and fifty, average of a hundred and fifty dollars an hour for service out at these other vendors. I do think that, I'm very, very confident that the hiring of that position will be a financial wise decision for the city. It will more than offset the expense that we're sending elsewhere. I just haven't budgeted, figured all of that in because I don't know when the hiring will happen and I can't be left without funds to be able to make those repairs until such time as he gets it up to speed. The last one is repairs to equipment, again, just to deal with increased vendor costs and inflation, we've overdrawn that account on the last couple of years. So the real, again, I think the real drivers operationally for the budget are us having a deputy chief that can help us with eighty percent of the work that we do with EMS and administering quality control and those types of programs. And then working toward using that grant to build in a EMS stabilization in the form of adding a third ambulance forty to forty two hours a week during the weekdays during our peak hours. The couple of intangible benefits that does for us, A, I think it does help considerably with retention and morale. Those folks have really lifted a lion's share and taken a lion's burden, especially since COVID. But the other thing we have to keep in mind is that because of our response model and because of our staffing model, I need those folks to still be able to fight fire. I need those folks to still be able to do technical and rope rescue and all of those other things that we have to do because of our size of our organization. And that requires training time. And they're happy, plenty happy being busy, but being able to break that day up a little bit so that they might actually be able to have one hour dedicated to training for some of these other things is huge for morale, but it's also huge for our performance when we talk about their firefighting skills and their technical rescue skills and those things. So those are the real goals, if you will, of the budget. Moving on to capital, we'll have a capital request before you for fire hose and nozzles. This really is just enough to replace hose that in the past year and a half to two years has failed, either on the fire ground, and we have had some hose fail on the fire ground, but also annually, we have to pressure test that. And so we really push it to its max limits based on testing criteria and we lose hose every year because of that, because you know, it's gotten worn out and it's been used heavily. So it's, it's just to maintain status quo. I will say, we did just, we're always seeking alternate funding mechanisms and we did just last week submit a grant application. No idea it'll be a year, it'll be eight months before I hear about it, but we submitted a grant application to replace a lot of hose to try to get us ahead on that. But this is what it's going to take until we hear on that to keep us at status quo. We also, a request for, to replace our command unit. This is two thousand and sixteen, it's got a little over a hundred thousand miles at this point. And this really serves, you can see at the back, as our command and control center for the fire ground. The fire ground really, and command has morphed into more than somebody standing there with a radio. This, you know, we have to listen to three or four channels. They have a command board to detail the operations, to document what's happening, most importantly to maintain accountability of the staff. Where are they in a building? What are they doing? What are we getting done? Are they safe? And those types of operations. So the program, the request is not only for the vehicle, but it's for the command and control units that we, the board, the rollouts and those types of things. We'll reuse radios, we'll reuse a lot of that equipment, it'd just be the cost of reinstalling that stuff. Additionally, we should talk about fire engines. Fire engines have gotten incredibly expensive. A few fiscal years ago, we replaced an engine and it was about six hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And when I was performing this budget, when I was creating this budget, I reached out to the same vendor and that same truck's about one point one million dollars now. And most importantly, the lead time on that truck has gone from a little less than a year to up to thirty six months. So that's caused us to really have to refocus on what we need to do and what we're going to do for engines to try to extend the life. The first part of this request up at the top is the deputy did a great job going to a vendor and getting a quote on a refurb of our truck. So basically, it's, includes an engine and transmission rebuild, an electrical system overhaul. And honestly, in these trucks, they're so computer driven that electrical gremlins are one of our biggest reasons they're out of service. So and you get some salty water from the roads and some of these electrical connections and we're getting error codes and stuff like that. So an electrical system overhaul, brakes and springs, chassis work, a pump rebuild of the fire pump and a frame corrosion treatment and paint and body repairs. That's a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar request. We believe that that'll extend, this, this would be on one of our reserve pieces, but it would allow that piece to remain in reserve status and be brought into service when we have something else out for maintenance. And we think that that'll buy us about five years of life by making that kind of expenditure, trying to extend the life of our current apparatus. This request for an engine replacement is really there, we need to have a discussion about. And what I mean by that is, I would not, in normal days, I would not have had that request for a new engine in the capital this year. It would have been in there about two years from now. What I need to help, your help in navigating is, when do you put these requests in when you know you've got lead time for thirty six months, right? How do we, when do we get approval for that so that we can get that on order? The, these are all custom built pieces, the manufacturer isn't going to build that until they've got a commitment from us that we're going to buy it and a down payment on it. But we won't have to pay the lion's share of that one point one million until thirty six months from now when we take delivery. So I'm not asking for that because I think that we need to approve it July, this year, I put the order in July first and I'll have it soon. I think I need that truck by the end of FY twenty seven into FY twenty eight. But when do we approve that so that we can start that purchasing process and get that ball moving is the great discussion. And I think for another time, but you, I wanted you to understand my logic around the request at this time. On the EMS side, and I would reiterate that, you know, there is an EMS capital reserve account that's been funded through EMS revenue in the past. account that's been funded through EMS revenue in the past. A used ambulance. If we do in fact move toward staffing three ambulances, I can't do that with only a fleet of three ambulances. We have a new ambulance on order, but again, 24 to 30 month lead time for it, right? So this is a cheap used ambulance. The vendor we're buying our new ambulance from has been holding it for us. And this would be funded with that grant that we have received, the $50,000 from that grant. What that would do is it'd allow us to buy this ambulance and now I have the three that I currently have in service. So when I have three staffed, I always have three available and if one breaks down, I've got one for reserve. It would really be used as a reserve piece. The other thing it does is as soon as I get in my new ambulance that we ordered last fiscal year and is still a few years old, we're going to start sending our ambulances, rather than replace ambulances, we're going to go on a program of remounting them. That'll save us about half the cost of an ambulance because they've gotten so expensive. And what remounting entails is they take the EMS body off of it, refurbish that and put it back down on a new chassis with zero miles on it. So we've got, you know, new engine, new transmission, new brakes and all of those types of things. I can't send a truck out for a two month remount without having one in reserve. So because of the grant, I think this is a real cheap way for us to stabilize our operation, buy this with that grant, have one in the fleet so that we can do those things all in the extent of trying to extend the lives of our ambulances. And to that same end, the stretcher is along the same vein. Gives us the stretcher we'll need for that ambulance, but also gives us a spare. These are, these aren't just, these are power stretchers so we don't have to lift heavy patients. We can just zoom them up, saves on workers comp, saves on back. It's what we currently have, but because they are more mechanical, they could have breakdowns and we don't have a spare right now. So again, if we're going to staff a third ambulance, having one available to us so we can always keep that ambulance on the road would be important. So that is the extent of our presentation. And I didn't entertain any questions.
Any questions from the council? Council note.
Previously, you said that staffing a third ambulance, the issue was being able to hire for the third ambulance. And so do you feel confident that in today's market, you're going to be able to staff that third ambulance?
So we are, yes, I do. We're actually, next Monday, we'll be starting the biggest rookie school that we've ever run of seven new hires. Our last recruiting pool is bigger than it has been in three or four years. That brings us really close to par. We're not running a seven to eight person deficit on a 64 person department after these folks get trained. We will have filled that gap. And I think that's important. I, I would not be looking to force a lot more overtime on our existing crew, which is actually counterproductive to what I'm trying to do, which was relieve stress on them. If I couldn't get back to full staffing where they're not having a bunch of overtime forced upon them because of low staffing and then trying to add an additional burden. So that's a great question, but I do feel confident, again, because we've got a great crew of good candidates starting, seven, starting next week. They'll go through 10 to 12 week training for us, but before this budget season will hit, they'll be on the floor fully trained and filling spots.
Excellent, thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, Councilwoman.
I'm wondering with the high cost of equipment replacement, if it might be useful to do like a capital needs assessment of all the trucks and then try and budget like a fixed amount per year as best you could versus this, you know, a million here and 250 there?
I absolutely agree. We've had some of those conversations. I know that the city manager is looking at those opportunities. And the other thing I have the vendor looking at, to be honest with you, is a lease purchase. Don't even know if, but, but to basically say that over a period of time for that engine, rather than the peaks and valleys that you're talking about, there's some fixed cost with a balloon payment buyout at the end if you opt for it. I don't know till I get those numbers back if it's the best financial decision, but we're pursuing those avenues because I definitely see the value. And I think, I think the right way to do it is to be able to establish capital reserve. But I definitely see, excuse me, the value of not having the shock to the system of these huge capital purchases when they come up.
Councilwoman.
Thanks for the presentation. You mentioned the increase in calls over the recent years. What are some of the top drivers? I fear it might be drug overdose, but are there other drivers that you think are going to continue to increase over time or might stabilize?
Yeah, so I mean, this is both reflective of the city of Auburn and then the macro EMS system, particularly in Maine. There are a couple of big drivers. One is economic growth. We see the more people that are coming into the city for their services or transportation or whatever it is certainly drives call volume. We see that with, you know, new housing units as well. With regard to the specifics around calls, certainly I would do a bigger lump than, certainly I think that, you know, drug related instances, but if I lump them bigger, I would say behavioral health related calls are a bigger part of what is called on us. It's becoming a bigger and bigger increment. I think it's a, I can't, I'm, I really like the fact that the city has taken the approach with the PSY program to try to integrate behavioral health response into what we do because it's becoming a bigger part of what we do. And I'm really anxious to see where that can blossom, what that can blossom into in the years to come. Bigger cities, Portland is already leaning way ahead on having a behavioral health response unit as part of their EMS because it's becoming such a large segment of what they do. And then lastly, on a macro level, Maine's aging. And so as the demographics age, the need for EMS service increases as well.
Thank you.
Other questions? Council Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is sort of off topic, but not. Elected officials and NIMs training. When will you book that for us to take?
As soon as the city manager can work it out with you guys, your schedule, I'm happy to teach that any evening.
Can you explain it to the new counselors?
I can, yeah. So in order to qualify for a lot of federal grant programs, the city has to attest that they are trained to the national incident management system. So as department heads, directors, there's a whole training roster, even public service directors, everybody that could play a role in an incident response or national incident management has to have a certain level of training to varying degrees. One of those trainings is for appointed or elected officials. It's a two hours, it's called G402. It's a two hour class, basically to orient you to the responsibilities of elected officials in an emergency situation. And we do it very regularly with new, we do it every time new councils come in. There's no threshold or timeline per se that you've got to have it done within your first month, but the sooner the better so that we can with a straight face say the city is NIMs compliant and everybody's trained at the appropriate level. And I know it's on the city manager's radar to get that scheduled with you. Happy to do it when they're ready.
Council Walker, did you have something?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. I'll start with the easy one. What is it that Public Works will do for you if you transfer your fire trucks over to them?
So when we, when we had the discussion with them, they actually, we talked to their leadership staff, but also some of their mechanics and said, what can you handle? What can't you handle? So most general chassis work, so they'll do lube oil filters for us. We do three to four lube oil filters per apparatus a year at about $1,200 a pop right now. And so when we're looking at two, four, five, we do about 15 or more lube oil filters a year at $1,200 a pop with a vendor. That'll probably be 150 bucks with Public Works for supplies, right? So lube oil filters are a big part of it, but any other chassis work, brakes, springs, all of those types of things, general repair of exhaust, those types of things are within the wheelhouse of Public Works, feel like they have the tools, training and capacity to make those happen. Things that they won't necessarily get into, fire pumps, the electrical control systems of our lighting or the control systems for the aerial device or any of that stuff that is fire apparatus specific really is still going to go to fire apparatus vendors. And we have good sense of, based on what we're currently sending out, how much of that work can go to them. Again, I do think that we're going to see a value to our maintenance line when that's fully staffed and ready of 60 to 80,000 dollar reduction in what we pay for maintenance. Again, I just didn't budget on all that reduction this year because that really would depend on them having that in place, trained and ready to go July 1st. And I'm not sure that that's realistic with Scott's current two vacancies plus wanting to add this one.
Okay, I guess I'll go to the second one. I don't know if you, if you'll be able to answer it because I want to go back to the, I've worked in this city here for many, many years and a lot before you came to the city. Back under, I believe it was probably five city managers ago, Public Works was told that they would do the fire trucks. They took on the police cars, they took on the fire trucks and they did exactly what you're saying that they will do this time with either them or you. Why did that stop to start with there when we had that program in effect back then? And I can remember the budget back then was they needed another specialist mechanic to go to work for Public Works in order to bring the fire trucks and ambulances if they came about at the time into Public Works. So I don't understand, where did it stop? Where did we go away from Public Works that was supposed to save back then a lot of money? So something happened.
You're right, I can't answer that history. You're, I don't know the answer to that, counselor, I'm sorry.
So Mr. Manager, maybe you can find out that answer.
Yeah, we can, we can certainly do some research into it. I believe, I mean, I remember when that was, I mean, as a director at that time, I remember that conversation. I believe a lot of it had to do with just the bandwidth. I remember we were having issues when we first initiated this with police cruisers as well, just the backlog of the staffing at that time to be able to get to some of that maintenance. I don't know if that's dropped off or a position was reduced. I can go back and try to, try to look at it. I know it's, it hasn't been in a budget, as you said, now for quite a few, quite a few years. So, but we could go back and try to take a look.
Other questions from the council?
Chief, what's the split with the state fire marshal's office on plans review? Is it building size? I noticed in your fire prevention unit, that person does plan review. How is that worked out?
So there are triggers for plan review at the state fire marshal's office, sprinkler systems and it is, it is building size, but more building use, so assembly occupancies. And then they do sprinkler system design, design review as well, but there's a whole gamut of other construction that falls in the realm that don't have a trigger for a requirement at the state fire marshal's office that would otherwise go unreviewed if not done by the fire prevention officer.
And you said the staff has to be trained at the paramedic level in four years. What's the level of EMS training for these new hires?
So we, our minimum hiring is EMT basic. For everybody's educational purposes, the entry level, EMT level is EMT basic, then there's EMT advanced, and then paramedic is the highest level. So our minimum hiring level is to hire at the basic level. Believe it or not, with the difficulty we've had with recruitment and retention and vacancies, for a period of time, we actually considered dropping that requirement just because it would open up another field of people that we could potentially hire. Fortunately, I think right now it looks like we've got off that, we've gone over that hump and we're still okay with maintaining that as a minimum requirement, but we hire. Now, I will say, when we have the opportunity to hire paramedic and in this current hiring class, there's two paramedics and one that's already at the advanced level. Is that correct, Matt?
Two advanced, one paramedic and one finishing paramedic.
Yeah. So really two that'll be paramedics before they go on the floor and two that are already advanced. So we prioritize hiring those people with that training. Even this time, again, it's part of it's because of hiring, we're hiring folks that have that paramedic license but have no fire experience, but have an interest in it. And we'll train them as firefighters with our in-house program. So we, our minimum hiring criteria is the basic, but we certainly prioritize hiring higher levels and we, and we do the firefighter training.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Great, thanks very much. The council want to have a short break here. So we'll take a 10 minute break and then we'll come back and start up again with the rec. department.
Thank you.
At the top, you'll see is Director. Under that is Admin Services, which is our executive assistant that oversees Norway Savings Bank Arena, Ingersoll, and all recreation-based activities. We also share a position with Financial Services. It's the info assistant or the switchboard operator. So, if you call the city, Tracy, she answers the phone. She's out of our office four days a week, and then one day a week at City Hall. Under that is our programmers, or other known, they're recreation specialists, as that's how you'll see them in the budget. We have seven of them that oversee various different programs, and I'll go over that now. So, we have our childcare division. We offer childcare, school year, vacations, and the summertime. Our before and after care program is called Auburn Adventures. We are in charge of 14 students. We would love to increase that, but currently, due to transportation, we just use our minibus that can only seat 14 students. But we bring them to school in the morning, and we pick them up in the afternoon. Then we have vacation camps, which is exactly what it sounds like. We serve kids during vacations. We max out about 40, and that's just due to staffing. A lot of the staff that we use are college and high school students, and not all of them are home at that point. And that's for pre-K through sixth grade. Our summer day camp is one of the largest childcare summer camps in Andersgård County, if not the largest. We serve pre-K through eighth grade students, 80% of them being Auburn residents. In a typical summer, we'll see between 250 and 300 students. And that is why we are housed out of Walton School, because if you've ever been to Walton School or know the numbers there, they have about 200 to 275 students. So, it's a perfect fit for us. There are eight groups. We start at pre-K and K, and we divide up into two for first, second, third, and fourth, and all the way down to middle school, which is actually one of our most popular camps. The day camp has a staff of 40, and then they have four camp leaders. So, those are the people that you see in front. I forgot to go over, can I go back? Forgot to go over our part-time staff. On the right here, you'll see that we also have a mentorship coordinator, and they're housed at our PAL Center. That's one individual that oversees a mentor program. That'll go over a little bit later. We also have recreation aides. There's four to five of them that, they help us out with multiple programs, not just one. So, that's why we call them recreation aides versus a program aide, which just helps with one specific program. We have, we have six to seven park rangers in the summertime, and then, again, going over seasonal staff, about 45. And those are just paid out of summer camp. You will not see that in our part-time staff budget. And then volunteers are a huge part of our programming. We have 15 to 20 just program volunteers, eight to 10 CITs, which are counselors in training for summer camp, and 30 to 40 youth sports coaches. So, they are just as important as staff, and we do, when we have a good one, we like to keep them. This is our Family Enrichment Division. So, here are some pictures of some of the programs that we offer. So, essentially, Family Enrichment is all for free programming. So, this is no cost to any Auburn resident. There are Fishing Derby, which is annually, this year it's in May, so hopefully, it'll be a lot nicer and a lot cooler and not so hot. Movies in the Park, we usually, we tried to, last year the rain canceled most of them, but we tried to have at least four to five in various different parks. In the community, Spring Celebration is our Easter event. It's transformed into a drop-in, where you get your picture taken, you get an Easter basket, or you can build an Easter basket. We're hoping to get back into like a festival base, so it's a little bit bigger for the community. But after the pandemic, we just kind of stuck with what we knew. We started a brand-new program during the holiday seasons called Pizza in PJs. We had 50 people sign up the first year, which is pretty big for a free event, and we had a waitlist of 47. So, we're hoping to make it bigger and better next year and allow for more people to attend. And then, our trunker treat, which is, we partner with PW now, but it used to be our Fright Festival. That's our free Halloween-based event. So, it's essentially just a trick-or-treat at the rec department. Our Family Enrichment also includes our Grab and Go program. This program delivers to 208 individuals weekly, and then 150 individuals pick up their groceries one day a week. This is for families and individuals that are low income. Before, we partnered with CDBG with this program. Now, it's fully underneath our department. So, and it's, once the PAL Center is shut down, which I'll go over that in a little bit, it'll be run out of our pond building. So, we're focusing a lot of our time and attention at our pond building to make sure that we can house the program out of there and not lose any time in between. And going into our PAL programming, the PAL Center is currently located at Chestnut Street, but they'll soon be moving to Hasty Community Center on April 1st. We started asking the kids what they're excited about with the move, because we know it's sad for them to lose their building, but they've mentioned that they're super excited to be able to play indoor basketball, utilize the turf facility, there's more playground space. So, the kids that are currently using PAL, the PAL Center are excited for the move. So, that is reassuring for me. That will keep the participation, because currently, they're at 70 to 80 daily. So, that's not all in the building at the same time, but they check in, and that's what their numbers have been recently, especially on those half-day Wednesdays. The summer increases to 90 to 100. So, just another reason why we can't have summer camp out of Hasty, just because PAL is coming and they're going to take over. The community programs that PAL runs is along with our mentorship program. This is an NRPA grant. In the little packets that I sent to you or gave you, it has a mentorship flyer. So, this is my reach to you if you're interested in being a mentor. Kayla, please contact her. Her information's at the bottom. This is for at-risk youth in our community. It's just a chance for them to have an adult figure that they can look up to, because not all of them do at home. And you get, you can play sports with them, you can play games with them. Essentially, you'll go through a matching process with Kayla. And she has plenty of mentees, but currently, we just don't have enough mentors. So, if you're interested, you can reach out to me, or go ahead and reach out to the contact at the end of that. We also, they work with the Auburn Police Department with the bike rodeo. They have their haunted house. The big piece about PAL is their food pantry. They feed the students after-school meals, they cook with them, they teach them life skills. Also, the Anita's Closet is in there, so if any kids are in need of deodorant, shampoo, clothing, that is open to them as well. And that will not go away when it moves to rec. It will just be put in one of our back garage spaces that they can, for safekeeping. So, that won't go away. And then, I think that's it. Majority of the kids at 10 PAL are on a waitlist for mentors, so I'm just throwing that out there as well. So, there is a need. This is our youth sports division that we currently offer. We would love to expand this. Our participation has increased. You'll see that I put our special revenues budget, I know you already have it in your binder, but the number has increased, since this is from FY '23. I didn't have all the numbers for FY '24, because FY '24 is not done yet. So, the number has increased from 896 to 925. So, it's not much, but we're getting back to our pre-COVID numbers. We typically offer a league and a clinic, and we'll try to make sure that we have something for girls, boys, or co-ed, and something for pre-K through eighth grade every season. So, that's our goal. And if we don't, something gets canceled, we try to offset it by having a clinic. So, that's our goal, is to make sure that we're having, we're being exclusive to all those that want to try something. Our Little Eddie's Program is for pre-K and K. So, I'm trying to work with the school department on any sports that they offer, to have that school team help run it, so that it can be a free program eventually, because the school teams will essentially be the staff. So, that's my goal for that program. Trying to keep sports affordable is my biggest goal. So, I will have something in our community programs line item that I'm going to go over in a little bit. But those are our community sports. Adult sports, I would say that our adult sports division is the largest in Andersgård County, if not the state, with over 4,000 participants all over the state. We're looking to offer more tournaments for this age group, so like kickball, pickleball, and flag football, because our adult sports recreation specialist has noticed he has a lot of the same people coming back. He wants to get out there and try something new and get more different faces in there. Pickleball is huge with 14, 100 players in a six-month period, because we don't count those that go and play outside. So, now that we have those outdoor courts, I'm sure Heath will come up with some way to keep track, but it's going to be double, I'm sure. And yoga has also increased since we've kept track over here. So, there's that. And another one of our largest divisions is our senior and 50-plus division. There's 29 senior programs that are held in the center with over 2,400 participants. This has substantially increased over the last year. The two rec specialists working out of there are doing a great job of offering a bunch of different things to get new faces, to help those newer seniors that are just hitting that 51, 52 age group to get in the center and try new things. There's 109 off-site trips with 1,300 participants. Again, there's repeats, but there's still that participation. Those trips fill up fast. The center is also used as a rental facility with 221 outside rentals, so that helps offset the cost of the senior programming as well. So, any money we make for that will help repairs for the building, and it's actually been a great moneymaker for us. And then, this is also the home for the city's committee, age-friendly committee. Then they host events, meals, movies in the building, and it's their main meeting space. But just because it's on this slide does not mean you have to be senior. It gets age-friendly, so anybody can join. These are the organizations that we are currently a part of. We use their resources to make our programs and department more efficient. So, it's, we don't want to invent something new if you can go and find it in a different place. A lot of them offer certifications that are required for some of the leagues that we're in, but there's also great sessions and courses that staff take within these organizations. These are the recreation buildings. On the left, you'll see Hasty Community Center. This is our newly renovated classroom. This is where we mainly have before and after care. This is their little classroom area. This is our recreation room. It's being renovated right now to make sure that PAL has a cool spot to be in. We just redid the floors, and we put a fresh coat of paint on there. And then, this is our new gym floor, which I love. It's so much better than the other one. We got a new gym floor, new lighting. You can't see the shades very well, but the shades match the floor. They have our new branding on it, and it's, it looks really sharp. Below is the PAL Center. That's the current PAL Center. As you can see, it's just an abandoned building. So, what they're getting, which is in the brochure that I passed out, there's a picture of the new building, and it is way, it's going to be way better and way nicer for the kids. I have the pond building here, and currently, it is going to be used, but currently, it's not used for any programming. It was just storage for some COVID items and tents, but it will be a building that we use for programming once Grab and Go starts in there. This is our senior center. Like I said before, there's 2,000 people in there a week. It's insane how many people. And it's used Monday through Friday all day, but then occasionally, there's those rentals. So, it's a seven-day-a-week building, just like Hasty is. These are our outdoor facilities, and I'll just touch on what we use them for, because Public Works is the ones that, they maintain them for us. We have Pettingill, which is two lit softball fields. Lakeview, which is two softball fields. They are not lit. Cleveland is a practice field off of Minna Ave. Chestnut Field is typically a practice field, but I don't believe it will be in use during construction. Union Street Park is right across from Chestnut Field and the PAL Center. That's where the Troy Barney's Courts are and the Fitzlil Courts that were donated by Dig Sporting Goods. Walton Field, that we acquired last year from the school department, is where we hold our football and lacrosse games and some practices. Taut Lot, you would be surprised, is rented out every weekend from May to October. Anything from birthday parties, school reunions, you name it. Someone wanted to use it for a wedding, so we maintain it to the best of our ability, and it's a great space for events. And then, other fields that we use throughout the city that are not technically ours, but we maintain them and use them for programs, are Auburn Suburbans' minor fields. So, that's their tee ball and their minor field when you pull in, and it's to the right. Then, Tribu Field, AMS fields for lacrosse practices. And then, for our track program, we've always used Eels Track. And so, this will be their first year on the brand-new school's track. These fields are also helped maintain by our summer park rangers as well. So, going into our budget drivers, the most obvious one for recreation is the salaries and the part-time account. So, the salaries are increased due to the union increases. And then, two additional recreation specialists, but it's essentially just one, because we had a recreation coordinator, and we just demoted that position to be back at a recreation specialist level. So, that's one for PAL and one for youth sports. And then, our salary, it's decreased because we no longer have Ingersoll underneath our umbrella, but it's not decreased as much as you would think. We actually still need a large amount of funding to offset the costs of keeping programs affordable and then charging staff out of our part-time account instead. So, this is our community programs line item. This is what I'm asking for, and I just broke it down, and you'll see this in your MUNIS breakup that Kelsey went over in the beginning. So, Snowmobile Club, that's a typical, we give that every year. That hasn't changed for a while. This $8,000 has changed a couple times. I think one year, it was to make youth basketball free. I think one year, it was to make youth basketball free. I just found that accountability wasn't there, and not everyone was showing up, so they'd sign up for a free program, and then they wouldn't necessarily show up. So I'm asking for $8,000 to offset the costs for youth sports scholarships for that family that doesn't have any income, and they come and ask for scholarships, but we don't have scholarships. So this would just be a funding that we can use for those special circumstances. Special events, those are our free programs that we have. Spring Celebration, PJs and PJs, we don't charge for those, so that offsets the cost for that. The PAL Center, this is just a line item for them to use if they need any additional items for programming, if they need a part-time staff, equipment, anything like that. And the senior programming is to offset the costs of free senior programs. This also includes the cost for the senior barbecue that we hold at the end of the year for three rental groups that use the building. This newest one is the Grab and Go Grocery Program. I'm asking for $70,000. And this cost is due to it transitioning for whatever we don't use. The money allocated by council, if that were to be depleted, I would need a funding to fund the program. This does not include staff. This includes food and supplies, gas for the van to deliver food. Last year, we spent $53,933. And this is a 30% increase, but we also had a 25% increase in participation. So last year, we had 290 individuals, and now we have 358 as of January, and we've had more people. So there's even more than 25%. So that's the reason for the large amount, the large ask for that. But that's for FY25, so July to June. That's what that covers. There's also in here, since the program's moving to Hasty and the Pond Building, we do not have the space, the freezer space that the PAL Center does. So we will need to purchase more fresh food because we won't be able to store as much frozen food. And that's the more affordable food that we purchase right now. And this is my PS general account. I think the biggest thing on here is the cost of porter potties. We supply porter potties for the entire city, for parks, fields, and it's $150 to $180 a potty per month. So it's just increasing every year, so that's why. It went from 10, I think I asked for 10,000 last year, and I guess for 12,000 because it's gone up from 150 a single potty to, or 120 to 150. And for everywhere you have a single potty, you need to have a handicap to be ADA accessible. So that's the reason for that. This emergency storage line decreased from the last time we talked because we just acquired two Connex boxes. So the number that is probably in there is a little different, but I've increased the cost of porter potties because I didn't take into account Festival Plaza's potties as well. And that's all I have for that. I did put our current brochure in the packet that I gave you. We made some adjustments to the way we promote our brochure. Our senior programs, there's just so many of them that we decided to make them into a calendar instead. And so, the calendar was already being made and handed out at the senior center. So we just had Liz create a QR code that goes right to their calendar on the website. We just felt like we were duplicating efforts by putting it in here and then also putting the calendar, and then asking the seniors. They didn't read our brochure, they just went and got the calendar. So it was just a lot easier for us to put it that way and not have a 50-page brochure. Yeah, that's all I have. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions by the council?
Just a quick one, you mentioned the sports scholarship funds. How many students would that help?
$8,000. Quite a few. I would say that it would depend on the season. I mean, if we're saying all of them are football players, it would be a lot less because football is $100 a kid. So yeah, I can look into that. I use, yeah, no, I used a number that we had asked for last year. And I was also going to offset the cost for anyone that came to us from the victim vouchers for the 10-25 tragedy because we're giving them free programming.
That's a pretty good ballpark, thank you.
Yeah.
Good, thanks.
Other question? Councilperson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thinking on your scholarships, we usually gave more than that a few years back, so I'm surprised it's such a decrease. We were giving like 25,000 at least or more because we had a motto that no kid was going to not be able to go to summer camp because families could not afford it.
We do, so summer camp financially is through CDBG. So we do provide $30,000 worth of scholarships through them. So that's not on here because that's not something we would ask for. That's something that we apply for, and then they allocate the money every quarter.
So then, is this funding for any other sports?
This is just youth sports. So that programming for the CDBG, that's just summer camp.
So you said you had requested this in the last budget. How much did you go, and did you go over that money? How much more did you go over?
So if you look at youth basketball on the special revenue sheet, that was, this was when it was... So for every age group, I went over $1,800.
So shouldn't you request a lot more so that if the manager cuts, you're still within your ballpark?
I could ask for more, I would love to do that. The number's not necessarily based on that. This is when we had just free basketball. So the program didn't do any free youth sports or anything else. It was just for basketball. So that's what that money offset with. Staffing is just really expensive, so we went over budget.
It's understandable. You guys take good care of your students, and they learn a lot. I've heard nothing but good things about your programs.
Thank you.
Now, this paperwork we were given tonight, will we be getting more pertaining to your budget that will go in our book? Or is this it?
It's in your book. Yeah. Just like all the other departments, you have that master sheet with their breakdown. And you'll be getting updated sheets with the manager proposed and so on and so forth to add to your book.
Thank you.
This is just our special revenues accounts. So this is what we take in and take out for youth sports and programs.
Other questions, Councilwoman?
Yeah, there were all those acronyms for the different associations you belong to.
Yeah.
And I was stuck on one, and I knew it couldn't be US alcohol, tobacco, and firearms. So what is it?
United States of America Track and Field. Yes. You didn't know the foot wings, that's the track, no, okay.
Other question? I had one question. I noticed one of your last slides, it was $4,200 for credit card fees.
Yeah.
So if somebody applies and they pay by credit card, the city's covering the processing fee? Is that what that's for?
Yes.
Well, I think we're working that into the cost, correct? So you're going to see the processing fee line item, but there's also a revenue offset that you're not seeing.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It just helps with our payment plan participants because if they were, every time they pay, they would be getting that fee. And it's just, the whole point of the payment plan was to help out those families.
Councilwoman?
Yeah, Movies in the Park.
Yes.
Wouldn't you be able to put them on Thursday nights, your dates, and then if it's a rainout, try to get them on Friday?
It's like you read my mind. We're doing Throwback Thursdays and then new movies on Fridays. So we're going to do a rain location this year. But we do have a different screen that won't blow away if it's a little bit windy. So I think that will help not cancel every single one. But yes, we do have rain locations this year, and they're offered on Thursdays.
I don't want to leave this without pointing out my championship photo for basketball that was on the screen.
I didn't do that on purpose.
Hopefully, you saw that. So now, last year was the softball championship. This one was basketball. I'm training soon for pickleball, so I think that'll be the photo in the future. I've retired these two sports, so.
No, I didn't do that on purpose.
Councilwoman?
It was a long game.
I want to ask you one more question. Cornhole has come so big everywhere, why haven't you tried to put together that?
It's a great idea. I'll let Heath know. That's a great idea. We are getting a concrete cornhole put at the park, the Lake Road Park through some mentorship funding. So I think that would be a great place to start.
So also, so, other than just me. So I think it's important to talk about the mentoring program, the NRPA grant. They've actually highlighted our program because of such a great job that Kayla and the team is doing. Rita's the coordinator for the grant funding on that, does a super job communicating with them. As a result of that, they're actually providing additional funding to improve that. They really are meeting the needs of the most vulnerable kids in the community that could really use this. So it's just really a great program. And the fact that it's being recognized at a federal level so that our coordinator now will also mentor other communities that are running this program to help them build up their program so it's successful.
Councilwoman?
Yeah, to touch upon what Councilwoman Walker said about another possible activity. I know the high school has volleyball, potentially adding volleyball to it.
Any other program ideas?
Any other question?
Don't include the alcohol and tobacco stuff.
Great, thank you very much. We'll move on to Norway Savings Bank Arena.
And if you're looking to follow along in your book, it's the second green tab that has the financial information for this one.
Mayor, Council, thank you very much. Mark Goslin, Executive Director of Community Partnerships and Sports Tourism for the City of Auburn. I have the privilege of, you know, working at the Norway Savings Bank Arena every day as well as now helping oversee the Ingersoll Turf Facility. Extremely proud of what these facilities have become in regards to who they serve, what we do, how we're doing it, the quality that we're doing it at. You know, and it's now becoming kind of an iconic piece in the hockey world and the sports world to have that facility here in our state. But then also, Ingersoll taking a, it's a good example of what you could take with a facility and be creative with it and figure out a way to repurpose a space. And I think that's what we do pretty well here, you know, with Donna's efforts at the Recreation Department and everyone she's serving and what we're doing as a whole in sports, recreation, and leisure. So pretty proud to be up here and talk about it. So getting into Norway, when we look at kind of the organizational structure, you have myself and Robbie Burby, who's now been promoted to the general manager, with a general manager title, where he's not just only overseeing Norway, but he's also overseeing the Ingersoll Turf Facility. With that, we also have someone who handles our programs, who was hired last year, with Kate Natto. Kate is a very established figure skater. It was a piece of programming that we weren't doing that we really wanted to explore into, reaching into. And Kate's been a great addition, not only on that side as a coach, but also as a person who knows the ice rink business. She even knows how to drive the Zamboni. So I mean, she's pretty, you know, full-service, and she does, and she's been a great addition for our staff. We also have ice technicians, we also have two full-time ice technicians who do a great job working underneath Robbie. And then, we also, at the same time, this past season, explored just hiring just a full-time seasonal ice technician. Our two ice technicians do a great job year-round. And then, when it came to the full-time season, we are really slamming at the arena. It was helpful to have a full, someone who was able to be a full-time, full-time hours at the arena. And then, also, we're adding a facility supervisor, and I'll talk more about that as we get into budget drivers. So when we look at the budget drivers, you're going to see two slides for, one for Norway, one for Ingersoll, and you'll see that theme kind of go forward. Any increases that you see within the budget? We've been trying to stay as flat as possible. We know the arena itself is a very expensive operation to run yearly. And for us, it's just trying to make sure that we're staffing it appropriately and making sure that the building's clean, operable, and providing the quality of service that we continue to provide our public. Not just our local public, but the regional as well as state, as well as those that are traveling more than, you know, for example, the roller hockey group. We're going to have 50 roller hockey teams coming across the country to be here and visiting our facility. Not one of them will be from the state of Maine. The closest one will be from Endicott and Boston University and Northeastern. So any increase that you see within the salary is just the standard increases that we receive. We did decrease our part-time expense at the arena. The reason for that is because we were able to hire that full-time seasonal person, right? We were able to hire that full-time seasonal person to help offset some of those part-time hours. So we are now able to be a little less on the part-time side because we are operating with those three full-time people during our busiest times. Operating expense, slight increase there. And that's simply because of the fluctuating of the prices of the resources that we're finding in regards to things that we need to replace with an aging building. The building now, believe it or not, is 10 years old, right? So we just celebrated 10 years. We're starting to see some replacements that need to happen and that are occurring. And we're finding out even our everyday type maintenance through our maintenance schedule, we're seeing bumps and increases in those types of products and services and parts. Especially with the Zambonis, and I shouldn't say the ice resurficers, those parts are continuing to increase as well. So that bump is to adjust for any increases that we're seeing coming over in the next year. Other increases on the revenue side, we're always challenging ourselves to find more ways to increase our revenue to help offset some of these increasing operating expenses. One is adding Kate, which is adding us for the first time ever to have our own Learn to Skate program, which will be something that we're going to run internally as our own internal program. And that will also complement the Maine Gladiators, who is the second largest youth hockey organization, and their Learn to Play program. The challenges we've been facing in those is the fact that our Learn to Play program is technically a Learn to Skate program, where they're not actually teaching kids how to play, they're actually teaching people how to skate. And your hockey stick is supposed to be a tool, not a crotch, right? Like, you need to learn how to skate first. And then, a lot of the Gladiators' parents have been finding out like, wow, my kid's leaning on my stick, and all these types of things, right? So we found that there's an opportunity for us to kind of get involved there, complement what the Maine Gladiators are doing, and then have them do a Learn to Skate program with Kate, and then we can then, then we can get them elevated to the Learn to Play program. That, again, just encourages more participation in sport. Never mind those that might not want to play hockey. They might want to learn figure skating, which will give us an opportunity to do some free skates at the arena. Ice time revenue, our plan is, right now, we are the least expensive ice per hour in the state right now, and we operate two sheets. Over the next two years, we're going to go $5, we're going to increase the rate by $5 this year, and we're going to increase to $5 in the year after that. We're already communicating to our user groups to let them know that that's coming down the pipeline. We always want to give them at least a year out to prepare because some of these users purchase a lot of ice time from us. So like, for example, the Maine Gladiators, $280,000 worth of ice time is a lot of ice time. When you increase that by $5, that's a significant, you need to give them more, you know, we want to give them as much ample time to plan for that. So we are going to see some little bumps in revenue in the ice time category because of those slight increases. With those slight increases, I still believe that we will be, if not the lowest, but very, very competitive within the state. So for example, Bitterford's charging around $300 an hour. Portland's charging around $280 an hour. an hour, Portland's charging around $280 an hour, Augusta's charging $270. Right now, we're sitting at around $245, $250. Which, again, provides, it's about accessibility. That's the, the one thing that we, when we built this facility, it was about accessibility and making sure that people could use it. So, that's coming down the pipeline. We're going to see some couple increases over the next couple of years. When we look at Ingersoll, your regular, the regular salaries, in the previous year, it was, you know, around $74,000. That was a, that was combining a couple of positions. Now with Norway and the staff and our staff taking it over, we are now just having a 40, you know, $40,000 position in there. And that $40,000 position is with current staff, is allocating, elevating a current staff member to be a facility supervisor over there, as well as Robbie dedicating some time over there, as well as myself and supporting Robbie and running the facility. So, it's not hiring a new person, it's basically elevating our current staff and utilizing our current resources to run that facility. Now, the increase, though, there is, we do need to increase a little bit of the part-time line so that we can help with the oversight, the cleaning, and making sure that it's running and operating the same way that we expect, the quality that we have at the arena, so that it's consistent. Antiquated building, the building, you know, Leroy, you saw that thing get built. So, it's an antiquated building, it's older. We're, we're needing to put some money into it, just repairs, maintenance. So, we increased that line so that we could be able to do so. And then from a, increase from a revenue standpoint and from a rental standpoint, we believe that there's going to be an opportunity to take the current scheduling that we're have, that, that we have there, finding some holes and finding some consistency so that we can grow our user groups over there and have it as like a consistent model that we do, that we have at Norway as well. So that we have consistent groups, consistent days, consistent times, and we're not searching for finding loopholes or finding holes to, to fit people in. CIP priorities, you're not going to see any CIP priorities for this year for Norway. We get one large project that we're going to be working on, starting, starting in May, which we're very excited about. So, nothing this year. But I do want it to, I think it'd be, I would be remiss not to talk about future years and what we can kind of anticipate what's going to be put on in the next, you know, four or five years. Everything that, you know, we do need to look at some additional rubber flooring possibly for rink two. Also, in future years, scoreboards, LED scoreboards, those LED scoreboards not only will provide updated technology, but it also provides an extra revenue source for sponsorships and marketing and partnerships. Everything from commercials to rotating logos to all kinds of different types of opportunities. The biggest one coming down the pipeline is a new Zamboni. So, we are right now looking and researching into what, what that would be, whether that's another electric Zamboni, or we do go back to propane, or do we go with another Olympia machine? Those are the two popular brands of ice resurficers. And we're going to be looking at the new technology that's out there that might be able to help make the job easier for the guys riding it, but also trying to make sure that it's not a half a million dollar machine at the same time. New sound system. We, you know, right now, the current sound system, you know, is, is kind of tired. There's a lot of tinginess to it. There's a lot of stuff in regards to just the quality of the sound. And, and of course, technology nowadays with sound is so much better than it was 10 years ago. So, we're going to start researching what that might look like and what other buildings are using that are similar to ours with the tinny nature to it, you know, and, and understanding the acoustics of what that might, might look like now versus what it was 10 years. So, we're starting to look at that. Ingersoll, you're going to see from, from the tour, I think you guys got to take a look at the Ingersoll a little bit in regards to the flooring that's outside of the turf, outside the turf area. This year's CIP, we want to address that and look at a, a floor that might be more conducive, safe, and also easier to clean. So, that's, that's a big, that's a big priority for us. But coming down the pipeline with Ingersoll with future projects is looking at replacing the turf. And, and we're looking at some opportunities and, and what those options are. And then later on, and you're going to see the next, after the next slide, one of the biggest things for us in evaluating budget is looking at a SWOT analysis of each facility. And I'll talk more about this, but also in future years, adding what we could do with the multipurpose floor that could be put on top of the turf, that could address possibly pickleball, could add basketball, could add a number of different things. So, that, that is something that we're also researching right now. So, when it comes from the sports tourism side and the event, event and also marketing and sports partnership side, the arena itself has become a facility and a multi-use facility, and we're proud of who we're able to house there and the types of events. It, it goes more than just the six high schools that we serve. It's crazy that we serve six high schools out of that facility. I think at the beginning, it was just looking at maybe two or three. Now, we house six that are, that call it home. And then now, there's also three or four other additional high schools that rent ice from us from other communities, such as Mount Ararat, such as Brunswick, such as Scarborough, that drive to use our facility for practice time. They find it's easier, more feasible for them to take a bus, drive to us for practice, and then, and then go back home. We have the second largest youth hockey organization with the Maine Gladiators, who not only just use our facility every day, but also bring local and regional tournaments to us. We have three or four adult recreational leagues. That includes everything from highly competitive to Learn to Play for adults, as well as coed, as well. On a non-ice hockey side, we host the largest RV show in the state that's coming up here very, very soon. We have the home show that comes and, and participates with us and utilizes our facility. We also do the Business to Business Trade Show out of the arena in the, in the small time that we have for events. We've held concerts before with, when it works out well with partnering with the right people. You know, so the non-event side is, is a good window for us. It's about only three months, but we're trying to maximize and take advantage of those three months as much as possible when we have the cement slab, and that's 22,000 square feet of space to use for other events. Showcase tournaments, we just, this past weekend, it's not just about having tournaments locally, but it's also tournaments that are just regionally, as well as the state championship that we just did with the Maine High School girls, with Maine High School girls. We had about, we had 800 people at the arena for the High School Girls State Championship. It was sold out. It was great. It was a great environment, and a lot of the girls and the coaches were just like, the girls have never played out front of a large crowd like this. This past weekend, we held the Tier, Tier One Regionals. We had the number one team in the country at the facility this weekend with the, also the number one rated 14 and under prospect at the arena this past weekend. So, that included NHL scouts at the arena this weekend, that included Division One scouts at our arena, and also Canadian Hockey League scouts at our arena this past weekend, watching, watching this young man play. He was only 14 years old. And the team, and the team that was, is number one in the country is from, from Vermont, Mount St. Charles. Just a great team. But the, the teams that were here this weekend were all from Rhode Island, Connecticut, Rhode Island, Connecticut, New Hampshire, Massachusetts, and then we had a team representing in Maine. Exhibitions, we're very lucky to have a partner in the UMaine Black Bears who come down, you know, and do a girls' game with us. We're going to be trying to do a guys' exhibition game next year. It was held at Colby this past year. We're trying to do that next year here, here at the arena. But those exhibition contests, such as the Maine Mariners, those are opportunities for us to sell tickets to those types of events and allow us to gain other revenue. National events, like the National Collegiate Roller Hockey Association, we're excited to host our first national event here this coming April, April 17th to 22nd. Hotels are very happy. The room blocks sold out in 24 hours. As soon as the bids got out to the teams, the room blocks sold out in 24 hours. The problem is, is now we have more teams looking and more teams and more fans that are trying to come to the area, and our hotels are now like, okay, we should have given you more room blocks. So, we're, we're working through that. Some great partners there. Cindy Robbins, who doesn't open early, who rarely opens early, the Pullen Spring Resort, she opened up her lodge and hotel for the tournament. So, she, she's a great partner of ours, and we're excited to host our first national event, which hopefully allow us to continue to put bids in for national events. One-time special events, you know, we're, again, the Maine State Girls Hockey Championship falls into that. And then, we just hosted the Special Olympics. This holds, and it was a really simple day, it was four hours. But if you've never participated in a Special Olympics event, it's pretty special. You're not going to find happier participants, you're not going to find happier individuals, the volunteers who did a great job with that. But what Robbie did, and I'll, and this is a testament to Robbie, what he does, is he, he researched what, what speed skaters, what they do to maintain speed skaters' ice, and he actually took an hour to do that for the, for those kids. And it was funny, someone who does speed skating was volunteering their time, and she goes, you don't need to do that for these kids. And, and Robbie's like, yeah, I do. He goes, this is a special event. They need the best ice possible. And they usually skate at Sugarloaf on an outdoor sheet that's all kind of bumpy and whatever, and this is the first time. So, they were super excited, super great event, and I hope we're able to, kind of, I hope we're able to participate again. Another internal program that's a one-time special event that we do every year is Skate with a Co-op. Skate with a Co-op went, has gone extremely well, and this year, it was extremely packed. And next year, we're going to open up both, we're going to shut down the arena for those timeframe and just open up both sheets because we're, I think we'll have enough people to, to open up, and it's a great way to get people into the building. Partnerships, marketing, very, very important piece to the building and which helps us maintain sustainable from a revenue standpoint. Right now, our goal is to always try to, we, it's easier to keep new partners and it's harder to go out and find, well, it's easier to keep your current partners and it's harder to go out and find new partners. So, our, our challenge and, and what we try to do every single year is to make sure that we're retaining as many people and we, we're not going out and chasing as much as possible. And most of our partnerships now are multiple-year partnerships. They're not just single-year partnerships, they're three, they're five years. And the biggest one was this past year with Norway Savings Bank and renewing them for another 10 years. And that's significant for us. Also, our goal every year is to maximize our cash and in-kind. In-kind partnerships help us keep our budget and our budget numbers down because that's kind of trade that's coming off to help us with our operational costs. And right now, every year, our goal is to keep that above $200,000. That's kind of the threshold that we know that we need to be. And that's, we'll be in access to that this, this coming year. And then our social media presence, that's another thing that Kate's bringing to the table, is now we're having a, a person that's dedicated to the website, social media, and I'm sure you've probably seen that we've had a lot more action on, and a lot more shares and a lot more activity on social media. Last two slides. Every year, every year, we look at how are we going to plan for next year's budget. And every year is talking, is taking a look at what our strengths are, what our weaknesses are, where our opportunities can be, and what are the threats that are out there that are going to stop us from meeting our goals and objectives. Our strengths remain, you know, we are the only two-sheat facility in the state, lowest in the state. You know, and every year, we send our, our staff out to NARS, training and certifications are important, and, you know, being number one in class there. Robbie is two, Robbie's two classes away from his Certified Ice Rink Manager certification. He will be, when he gets that done, he'll be the only one in the state at that level. All the other staff, they're going for their Certified Rink Administrator, they're going for their Certified Ice Technician. They learn all the important stuff as it relates to operating an ice facility. Everything from painting, the behind-the-house and, and temperature, in operational services, marketing, HR, risk management are all part of those classes. When we look at weaknesses, after 10 years, we are, we are starting to see just a little bit of a breakdown of the facility. So, you know, we're, we're addressing those as they come along. The lack of, the lack of non-ice event resources, what I mean by that is stages, chairs, all those kind of event stuff related, kind of limits us on what we can do in regards to non-ice events. Our technology and Wi-Fi services is something that we're finding out is a little struggle right now. It's a little tired. We are trying to look into how we expand that in providing services to our, our customers. Believe it or not, I know this is going to sound crazy, but a lack of third, a lack of an additional sheet of ice is limiting us in our bid processes of what we can go after for bids for tournaments. Most minimum courses are around, most minimum tournaments are at least three to four ice sheets in regards to hosting a regional and national event. And then also, our lack of seating capacity also limits our ability to do certain things with the facility. Opportunities that are out there, adding a third sheet would allow us the ability to kind of go after certain things and allow us to expand and grow. We also have had a group come in and look at what possibly a solar field would look like on top of the facility from an energy resource standpoint. That is just, the original step is just a walkthrough. We had some people come through, but Derek was at the facility and walking through with those people. And it, and it's an opportunity that we might be able to explore in future years. The new cement floor is going to offer us opportunities on non-ice events. We're now adding 22,000 square feet of convention space. So, that's going to allow us to offer more space, make it easier for the RV show, and make it easier for other shows to grow, such as the home show. Also, there is an opportunity for us to run our own hockey programming. There's a lot of junior programs out there. There's a lot of different types of opportunities, and, and partnering with the Maine Gladiators could also offer other opportunities for us to get into that hockey space. And there's, there's some revenue there in regards to people paying to play hockey on teams and, and having that city run. And then also, new rental spaces. The mezzanine is a space that we could potentially look at, you know, putting additional services that we could gain additional income from an outside person. Threats, you know, really kind of like the two major ones is a steady increase of the operating expenses of running, of running an ice sheet. That is always going to be a threat there and, and, and it's just one of those things that we're going to have to try to continue to make sure that we evaluate and consider and make sure that we stay on top of. And I don't know if this is a weakness or a threat, but I just wanted to put it there, it just came to light with hosting the National Collegiate Hockey Roller, Roller Hockey Championship, is the lack of lodging. That's limiting us in regards to what we might be able to put out for bids. And lastly, when you look at Ingersoll, the strength serves a large footprint of users because there's a lack of turf facilities in the state. Our rental costs are very competitive across the state, which keeps us very, very busy at the turf facility. When we look at weaknesses, the facility itself, the low ceilings is kind of tough for certain sports. Space limitations, such as the lack of viewing, also changing areas. And the use is still seasonal. It's hard to compete with Mother Nature outside when it's 80 degrees out and you have a green grass to, to go play on. That's, that's the nature, no pun intended, that's the nature of it, right? But if we are able to explore pos, and this is almost an opportunity, if we're able to explore in some HVAC, some air conditioning, some, some climate control in there, that could be a different story, where we could possibly bring in some people in, in the summertime months. Opportunities, we talked about the floor covering that could be used for multiple purposes. Maximize and grow, you know, we're, right now, we can maximize and grow our consistent user group. So, we're not, I don't, I don't think, we are very, very busy, but I think we can get busier. I think we can get more people in there by maximizing the schedule. And by the way, the demand for indoor turf continues, continues to increase. The threats, of course, other facilities that are being built is considered a threat. And then also, the deferred maintenance of an aging building. We, we got to monitor that and make sure it doesn't affect what we're trying to do long-term, or right now and long-term.
Questions from the council? Counsel Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is sort of a question, but not. It keeps coming up about the climate control, and we keep saying, go for it, because we know you can probably double or triple your time in that facility. Because like, if it's 90 outside, you sure don't want to... Because like, if it's 90 outside, you sure don't want to rent a place that's 90 inside. And the beauty of it, if it was cooler, even at night, you could have activities that go later on in the evening. I mean, like what you have at Norway Savings now.
That is, that is going to be the plan that we're going to, we're going to evaluate that. We're, we're new into this process. Robbie and myself and our staff are new in taking over management of the turf facility, and it's going to be a priority for us to look into what that might, might look like.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions?
Just a quick one, the third sheet of ice, is there demand for a third sheet outside of tournaments or during, when they're not here?
So, it's so funny, we look at measuring the third sheet of ice of how much ice time we would give our biggest, how much ice time would our largest user group gain if we were to purchase a third sheet of ice, right? Because they're our biggest spender or our biggest revenue, right? With our current user groups and the amount of high schools that are looking to call us home, for example, Mount Ararat, Mount Ararat can only skate at Bowden College either at 4:55 in the morning or at 7:45 at night. Those are the only two options that they share with Brunswick High School, which is not a lot of, you know, ice time. A.J. Kavanaugh, who runs the Mount Ararat program, said if we had a third sheet, he would bring, he would bring their whole program here, and Brunswick would most likely follow. So, in that, Robbie and I have done a pro forma around that. The Gladi, with adding that, such a Maine community college is adding a women's ice hockey program, which we're going to have to get creative right now of how we do that right now with the current space. So, with all those and the pro forma, in a, in eight-hour day, that third sheet, the Maine Gladiators will only get an extra two hours a day. Everything else would be filled with new users and pretty much high school teams. That, okay.
Any other questions? Great, thank you very much. Mr. Manager.
So, you have in your books your... Sorry. You have in your books your five-year CIP plan. You've been hearing the FY25 requests as the departments have been presenting. You'll continue to hear those as we move forward. Couple highlights that I wanted to make in the five-year plan. Couple things that we've done is really worked at, and we're really pushing the directors to really consider what years three, four, and five look like. They've always been really good about what's year one of that plan, what's year two, maybe a few things in year three, but then you'll see it taper off. It still tapers here a little bit because it's difficult to try to really determine what are we going to be, what's new that we're going to be faced with. But if you were to go through and take a look at their totals, you're going to see that we are capturing as much as we can in those future build-out years. So, there, there's no surprises as we try to plan and move forward. Things that I wanted to discuss, well, you know, the chief talked a little bit about the, fire chief talked about the fire engine needing to replace that. We are working, much like what Council Whiting had suggested, at something that we could do that you take action as a council, and as that action as a council, it's allocating the down payment that then will allow a future council to allocate the bond. That's, that's where, so if you look at how we're trying to thread this needle, it's, we want to make sure you're doing something that will require that additional step with that next council when it comes time to bonding. So, we might be working on the language so that when you do the language of the bond, it will be setting that directive. But we're working with council on this because, legal counsel on this and our bond agent on this, because it's really important that we get this right as we move forward. Something we haven't done in the past because there was no demand on it. If you, if you approve that fire engine, you know, and this, you know, they're in the budget process, we placed the order and it's arriving before that fiscal year is completed, but clearly, we're not there. Same thing is taking place within LATC. We're on the same type of pushout for new buses. However, what we do is we budget in, in the capital, and this will be the first time you see it. One thing I discovered as I was going through is that you never had a line item, even though we were allocating about $50,000 a year to LATC for their bus replacements, was never really allocated in here. It was funding that usually was left over from a bond, and then that money was transferred over to LATC. I want to make sure you see it. It's in here and ensures that that money is available as we move forward. I think the, the other highlight within here is if you go back and take a look at some previous CIP plans, what we've done is we've really been intentional about pulling some of the line items out of the departments and putting them in under really the functions, so facilities and energy. Same way that we're doing currently with the budget, you're seeing it in the CIP plan as well. All vehicles are now together, you know, separate from the large apparatus that the fire department's requesting. We're leaving that in their, their departments, but their fleet, what I would call their fleet management as far as standard vehicles. So, we're doing that, and you're seeing in the facilities and engineering, we're breaking out the Auburn Public Library, just so that it's very clear what we're allocating for the library as far as future maintenance costs. And these are capital maintenance costs that we're, that we're looking at. You know, as Dennis had shared, you know, when you take a look at 40-plus municipal and school facilities and the amount of square footage that we're maintaining, there's a lot. And I think that what's nice about the structure that we've done in the last couple of years is we have someone and a team that's focused on ensuring that, that work is being done, and we're moving forward with that. I think, you know, you heard the same thing from Mark with his team now over Ingersoll, you know, let's take a look at that facility. How do we continue to be competitive with our turf facility when new turf facilities are being built? Because we will see those. Education, you're going to see just a million dollars across the board. That's something that the school committee works through and identifies through there. Planning of what capital costs are for their buildings. They just had their, their study that was completed regarding their buildings. They'll be working in those costs in future years, but as a placeholder, I just placed about a million dollars. I know that's the request this year that came in from them, and so, that's why you're seeing, seeing that, that cross through the five-year planning. And then, you know, 23 and a half million dollars is what the requests are for this year. That won't be the city manager's request. You know, I'll probably try to reduce that by at least $10 million. So, what does that mean? That means some of those projects move out for future years, or we continue to seek other funding for those projects as we move forward. But there's no, you know, we wouldn't be able to move forward with that full 23 million, especially with some of the other projects that we have coming, like the public safety building. So, as we start thinking about what our debt service is, it's important for us to consider that. The other piece for, for new counselors, the bond that you approve in this fiscal year, you will not see that debt service in this fiscal year. You'll see that in the future year. So, as you, as you look at that, I think, I'll go back, I think we, we were on 13 million, I think, last year in the, in the debt service. Thinking we'll probably be somewhere within that ballpark is what my recommendation will be for this future year. As Dan said, we're still trying to maintain as many roads as we can, so I'm not making any recommendations to reduce the road proposals. What's important to notice on that is that shift that's taking place regarding, as Dan talked, the more that we are maintaining our roads, we're able to shift some of those costs so that we are spending probably a little more on resurfacing and less on reconstruction. That's our, that's our goal. We, you know, as much as we can reduce that reconstruction, the better we'll be moving forward as we maintain the 560-plus miles that we have within Auburn. It's required by charter for me to present this CIP plan to you before, I think it's March 30th. So, this is, this is that presentation to you. It's just a plan. You will adopt this plan at a future, future council meeting. At that meeting, if there's things that you're like, you know what, you don't have this in here, and I really think you should do that, we can do amendments, you can let me know. We'll look at making that change so that when you have it, it'll be a plan that you can adopt. However, you're not required to obviously spend that 23 million. You'll do that in an appropriation order when we do the entire budget. So, when you adopt the plan, you're just adopting what's being presented. Any questions?
Council Colin?
Just a quick clarification, Phil, when you mentioned you'd reduce slightly in terms of what's in the plan, is that you'd be moving those dollars out into future years in this plan?
So, I won't in the plan. They'll stay in the plan, they'll exist there, and then when you have the plan, when I present this plan, five-year plan again next year, some of those will either be captured in now the FY26, or you'll see it in FY27, depending on where our other needs are coming in at.
Thanks.
Other question? Great, thank you very much. I think that completes the budget workshop. We have an executive session on personnel matters pursuant to win one MRSA subject in 4056A is our motion.
So moved.
Vote will be by show of hands. All in favor? Opposed? We'll be in the executive session.